Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the December 5, 2023 meeting of the Southborough Select Board. The first item on the agenda is public comment. We reserve public comment for an opportunity for members of the public to offer comment on an item which is not on the agenda and keep comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to make a public comment? All right, if you could please state your, uh, your name and address?
Yep, Wayne Black, 94 Oak Hill Road. I was here at the last meeting about the pole number thirty-one at that address. I sent you guys a video showing where the pole's located versus my property and the town property. I just wanted to make sure you guys know where it is and if they're gonna put a push pole in, it's gonna end up in my wife's garden or in our lawn unless they go south towards Ashland on Oak Hill Road, north towards Route 9 on Oak Hill Road, or at some forty-degree angle towards the town property on Hilltop Drive. I just wanted to make sure that
Okay.
what I sent is legible enough.
Yeah.
I just had some time. I did look at it.
Okay. That's all right.
I, I did look at your, your, your package and then I went, now this is an imperfect thing.
Yep.
I went on the town's GIS system to sort of understand roughly where the property lines are.
Yep.
And it looked to me like along Oak Hill Road, the property line was about fourteen feet from the edge of the McAdam. And then as you come around the corner, sort of that, the, the curve, it looked like it was about twenty-two feet in from the, the McAdam. So I mean, I guess the, the question, and I'm, I, I don't know the answer to this, maybe you do. Is, is whether, you know, we have a clear understanding of
Where the lines are.
where the property line really is.
Yep.
Uh, it's a question for you more than it is for me. I, I looked at it. I didn't have a chance to actually swing by and look at it.
Yeah, right next to the, the pole is a rock wall that we can't touch because it's sanctioned. And then there's a rock wall that goes on Hilltop Drive from that same rock wall towards all the maples. That's, that's where we've been just piling up our rocks as we dug out the, the yard, so.
Uh, yeah, but my, my question is, is do we actually know where the actual property lines are?
I don't.
Because I
I don't see a marker.
Okay.
So maybe this is something where you could work with maybe
I'd be happy to work.
Bill Kandiff and try to address this concern?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
I don't want to trespass on your property.
Oh, you can. Come up anytime.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure I sent you whatever you needed and if there's any questions, we add that I can answer.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, uh, the next item on the agenda is the scheduled six thirty-five PM pole hearing for one fifty-seven Corderville Road. And Mr. Purple, could you please read the public hearing notice?
Yes, the Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 at six thirty-five PM in the McCalliv Hearing Room at the Southborough Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass. Consider a petition by Mass Electric Company, National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated to install underground facilities on Corderville Road from Pole sixty-five to the opposite side of the road. Meeting may also be listened to or viewed by the public through a link located at mass.south, uh, mass-southborough.civicplus.com backslash six seven four backslash virtual meetings, Southborough Select Board.
Thank you. Is there someone from the applicant here?
I believe the applicant is in the virtual audience. Uh, I believe it is the four oh one number.
Okay, can we bring them over?
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me all right now?
Yes, I think I recognize your voice. Are you from National Grid?
Yes, yeah, Al Galvin, engineer at National Grid. How you doing?
Okay, and are you here, are you here to speak to the one fifty-seven Corderville Road pole application?
Correct, yep.
Okay, could you?
So it's, uh, yep, an underground secondary service for Ever Source Gas. Uh, they put in a control cabinet and, um, they chose underground for aesthetics reasons, basically, um, instead of the overhead lines coming across. So they're choosing to put in a a handhole on the other side of the road from Pole sixty-five near their driveway Ever Source sign. Not encumbering any, there's no issues with any neighbors or neighboring lots or anything. It's all open grass there. A pretty straightforward job.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do, um, and I don't know why I haven't asked this before. Does Bill Kandiff see this and, and know what's gonna happen here?
Yes.
Okay, so he's okay. He would say something if he weren't okay with this.
He would, yes.
Okay.
And so this does require trench in the road to get across the road?
Yes.
I mean, we've had problems in the past with utility trenches that weren't somehow compacted appropriately. So I assume Bill will figure out what needs to be done to make sure the under-
I am sure Bill is gonna be right on top of that to make sure that the repair is appropriate.
Good, okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the board have any questions? Okay, uh, hearing none, or is there any from the public that has a comment on this application? I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? I'll post. Hearing no objections, I move that the board approve the, uh, application to install an underground cable from Pole sixty-five across Route eighty-five to a handhole for new service to Ever Source.
Second.
All those in favor? I'll post. Okay. All right, um, so now we have the problem we're running ahead of schedule. Oh, sorry, from, um, National Grid, are you still here?
Nope, he's gone.
No, okay. All set. All right, um. Any reason why we can't just? Chief, if you want to? Are you ready, if you want to be?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you for having us here tonight. I am here to request the board's appointment of Mr. Theo Davis to the position of student officer with the Southborough Police Department. Uh, we advertised this open position and once it became available after the promotion of Sergeant Steve Nybert in September of this year. Uh, we interviewed multiple candidates for the position and Mr. Theo Davis rose to the top of our candidate pool. Uh, Mr. Davis is a lifelong resident of Southborough, having attended Southborough schools for his early education. His gra- he graduated from St. John's Prep in two thousand and nineteen and recently graduated from Stonehill College in May of this year, where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. While at Stonehill College, Theo, uh, interned at the Mass State Police Fire and Explosion Investigation Section, uh, concentrating on the K nine program and the Worcester County District Attorney's Office. We are excited to have Theo as a part of our team and with your expected appointment tonight, we look forward to having him enrolled in the earliest police academy available. His academy training will take approximately twenty-three weeks and he will then be a part of our field training program, which is twelve additional weeks. Uh, his addition to our department roster will bring our number back up to twenty sworn officers. Um, at this time, does anyone have any questions for Theo?
I don't have any questions. Sam?
How long do you think it's likely to take to get an opening in the academy? Is this something that could happen in a few months or is it?
There are some openings coming up in, um, the end of December, January academies, but there are deadlines, so.
Fairly soon here, then. That's great news. Okay, thank you.
We're trying to get what we need to get done before we can even have the application in, so.
Okay, thank you.
We're there, thanks.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Davis, or?
Uh, we'd just like to say thank you.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, actually, if you go over there. All right, you can come back later.
You can do that too.
Um, yeah, I mean, I've, like the chief said, I've been a lifelong resident of Southborough and it's always been my dream to be in law enforcement and being given a shot to work here is, I'm very grateful for it and I'm very excited to get started, so I'm gonna say thank you to all of you for making that possible for me.
That's outstanding, but, um, you're, uh, will be joining us. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No question, but a comment is you're joining a really good police force. You have an excellent police chief here, um, brand-new building, so, um, all good.
Great to hear that.
I move that the board appoint Theodore Davis to the position of student officer in the police department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you need to get sworn in by Mr. Hagerty? Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. So we still have, uh, a little bit of time before our Class Two license hearing, so I'll, I'll just begin to give the chair's report. So, um, I circulated to the board earlier the, the letter from Ms. Lutrell, relating that the planning board voted to request that we approve special counsel to advise the planning board regarding one twenty Turnpike Road. And I just wanted to report that we will consider this at our next meeting on December nineteenth, okay? You know, we actually don't typically have a public comment on, um, items that are just under the report, so. Okay. Pardon me? Is it possible to just come back at the meeting on, on the, the nineteenth and hear, hear this all together or?
No, it's, it's, it's important and the process is going forward.
Sure.
The process is going forward and it's important that these issues be raised and, uh,
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
I get the short si- I get the short si-
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm Paul Carter. I live at Six Hillside Avenue. I'm a professional engineer. I've been managing, designing road and bridge and bike path and site development projects for thirty years. In this case, existing comprehensive permit refers to an, an address of the forty B apartment project, project as one twenty Turnpike Road. One twenty Turnpike Road is located at MAP thirty-seven Lot Four, which is the lot referred to in the approved special permit for the two office buildings identified as one twenty and one eighteen. I believe that the special permit lot that is currently exist is not a suitable lot for the forty B project because the existing special permit for the office uses do not include residential housing or other provisions. In order to get a better understanding of this issue, I researched the following documents. Seven sixty CMR Department of Housing and Community Development, CMR fifty-six Comprehensive Permit, Low or Moderate Income Housing, Mass Cases Supreme Judicial Court, four fifty-seven, Mass seven forty-eight, Zoning Board of Appeals, Amesbury versus Housing Appeals Committee, Taking the Initiative on Housing Production in Your Community, Methods for Utilizing Forty B and Other Zoning Tools.
We can, I, you're
You can read it, okay?
Okay.
Okay, let me just summarize.
Okay, please, thank you.
So I also spoke briefly with the people at Mass Housing, Catherine Lacy and McGurran, posed the hypothetical question, does a forty B comprehensive permit housing project need to be tied to a fully defined, specific legal lot? They both applied, replied yes. My understanding is that only one of two things is allowed to achieve that for this forty B residential apartment project, that is, a, a specific legal lot. MAP thirty-seven Lot Four, which is currently includes two existing office buildings, one eighteen and one twenty, needs a special permitted amended to allow a third forty B residential apartment on the same lot. This modified special permit, Lot Four, would need to be specifically referred to in the forty B application. Much of this is very vague in the application. The forty B Comprehensive Permit Application Submittal needs to be a, a fully defined preliminary subdivision plan. That's clearly in the regulations. So that's the second alternative, separate residential lot for the forty B apartment project, a remaining Lot Thirty-seven, MAP thirty-seven Lot Four, which includes the two existing office buildings and a subdivision road providing legal frontage to the forty B housing project. I recommend that if there is any doubt or question regarding this issue, the two possible ways a lot for the forty B apartment complex needs to exist or be created, then the planning board and the zoning board of appeals need to request and receive a detailed written legal opinion from town council regarding this issue before any more action
Okay.
is taken on this project. I believe this is entirely reasonable and appropriate and within other boards and departments to receive legal counsel. These two alternatives stand until the legal counsel gives a written decision.
Thank you. All right, um, so I think the next item is the Class Two license hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
The Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing Tuesday, December five, twenty twenty-three at six forty-five PM. McCalliv Hearing Room, Seventeen Common Street, Southborough, to consider an application from EG Automotive LLC for a Class Two Used Car Dealer's License to be located at one forty-five Boston Road in Southborough. Public hearing may be viewed or listened to by the public through a link located at mass-southborough.civicplus.com backslash six seven four backslash virtual meetings. All interested parties are encouraged to view and/or participate.
Okay, could you please introduce yourselves?
My name is Justin Passini. This is my son Ethan. I took over the garage back in April and we're looking to add used car sales to it.
All right, is this the former, the Southborough Auto Tech location?
Yeah, Bill Stapleton's place, yeah. Philly's place, yeah.
All right.
You know, we've done a lot of work there. We've cleaned it up quite a bit.
Okay, um, how many cars would you be looking to have on site at any given time?
Looking for a license for twelve. You know, um, realistically, we'd probably have six or eight on there on, on that part. And the reason is too, is that sometimes we might do work for other dealerships, which we are now, that aren't registered. So we can bring them over there to fix them.
Okay. All right, any questions?
So I've got a couple. So, hello there, um, I've heard a lot about you from Mr. Faff. So you're doing the repair work and someone else is doing the gas station part of it, so, so, um,
Let's do separate things right now.
Okay, so is, is the LLC that has the, um, address in it, is the one doing the gas, one forty-five Boston Road LLC? That's not you.
That's not.
That's them, okay, so they're doing the gas.
Correct.
All right, and you're leasing from them
Correct.
the space to do the repair work.
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, um, and you want twelve cars?
Yes.
And so just a caution, there's, there's other businesses in Southborough that are doing the same thing and we're very strict about making sure they comply with the number of cars, so things have happened where trucks have come in the middle of the night and lights have been shining and windows. I don't think you're gonna have that problem where you are. There's not that many houses. So I think you're gonna be fine, but just, you know, if you, if you say twelve, stick with twelve, no more than twelve.
Can we use the garage mainly to fix, also change, we use that garage to fix more cars?
I, I wish you, wish you luck.
It looks to me like twelve is a pretty tight fit on that lot. I, I counted the spaces here.
It is, but right now, we don't, we use the garage if you go by there. It's mainly to fix my trucks.
Yep.
You know, we do fix other people's cars, but kind of in and out, a lot more oil changes there.
Yep, we've gotten into situations in other locations where you say, you know, X number and then it turns out people need to have the staff parking in there, which adds two or three more spaces and so it creates some congestion.
Correct, so right now, like, most of our, the employee parking is parking at the, at the building next door.
Okay.
But again, we only have three employees there.
Okay.
Two mechanics and, uh, the gas.
So parking next door is not a problem? I don't, I don't know who owns that next door parcel, so.
By next door, you mean that kind of?
To the east.
Where the business places are, that long building, then the car wash is on the
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that answers my question, but again, I think that, you know, we've been, uh, run into a little trouble in the past in terms of crowded spaces, so please be very careful about that there.
You know, with all my companies, they said we run a really tight, tight ship.
Good, we hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just a, a quick question. If I recall, the, the, the spaces that are on the left side of the garage really are double spaces, is that?
There's, correct, yeah, there's, uh, two that are triple and I believe there's
So you actually have more spaces than white, than the white lines might indicate
Correct.
in terms of on the site. Um, you know, the, I don't, this is an area without a lot of neighbors and it's on a main road and, um, you know, this is a service that, uh, the community needs.
No, I appreciate it. So we got a lot of good reviews so far. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Uh, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Wait, you have one more vote?
Not quite done yet.
You're almost there.
One more, one more vote.
I move that the board approve the issuance of a Class Two License to EJ Automotive LLC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Best of luck.
Have a great day.
Uh, there, actually, there's a hand raised, yeah, Andrew, oops.
Uh, I'm, we missed it. Sorry about that. Kathy, you want to speak to the members' report update on NEARI School Building Committee?
Yes, so, um, every time I do this, I'm, I'm probably gonna repeat what I did before just to make sure we're on the same page as far as where we are. So remember, there are three subcommittees that have been formed per MSBA rules. One of those is the subcommittee that is trying to select the designer, that is going to do the feasibility design of the project. So the MSBA met today to start that process. We were represented by Mark, by Andrew Faff, and by Greg Martino, um, school superintendent. They had excuse me, Roger Challen, oh, sorry, Roger. Would not want to miss Mr. Challen. Okay, so, um, there were four candidates when the meeting started. When the meeting was over, there's three. That's what the purpose of that meeting was, so we're down to three. They will make the actual decision on the nineteenth, um, as far as which one will be chosen. So same night, we're gonna meet again. Um, I'll have a report that probably will be able to tell you who has been picked as far as a designer. That will happen the nineteenth and I talked to Jason Malinowski today, who's the chair of the NEARI Building Committee, and he expects that if that happens on the nineteenth, then, um, the firm would begin work early January, so it'd be off to the races as far as the period that we're gonna have, which we think is about eighteen months to truly go through the feasibility of the three choices. Remember, three choices, close Fin on two of those, keep Fin open on the third. Um, there is nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was approved at the May twenty-two town meeting, um, to fund this. MSBA will reimburse, um, a piece of that as we go, so it shouldn't cost us nine fifty in the end. Brian has bonded the nine fifty, I believe, so I think we're ready to, no? Okay, so, um, all right, so we won't talk about how we're gonna, so, anyway. Okay, um, so that's where we are with that piece. The finance subcommittee meets this week and we continue to just, um, um, approve invoices from the owner's project manager, so those two pieces, that piece is in place. This is the second piece. We're off to the races. We spend a year and a half designing and then we decide which way we're gonna go.
Excellent. Mark?
Thank you. So just a couple of quick, um, um, probably should have asked the chief to give the update, um, on his, on his grant award. It's funny, I don't actually have that information sitting in front of me, um, as to the grant award, but the chief has gotten another award that is gonna reduce, you know, the amount of money that we have to spend on equipment.
Okay.
And, um, I, for the life of me, I cannot remember, because he's been getting quite a few, if you've noticed in the updates, so. We appreciate, um, him continuing to do that. I was probably more focused on the second piece of my report, which is the, um, St. Mark's Street Park. That has been coming along very well. We've been a very, uh, beneficiary of the weather. Bill Kandiff has been shepherding that process with the contract with Belco. Been very pleased with Belco, with the submittals, um, with, with all of their information. If you've driven by, you can see, you could begin to see the, um, uh, the pathways, uh, being set and also the wall being constructed. So it really is nice to finally, um, see some progress happening. If the weather stays well, um, we could see everything pretty much, uh, completed sometime in January, with the exception, obviously, of the plantings, which will happen in the spring. Uh, and, uh, the trees that were, uh, of a concern not to be a native, um, considered native species, um, are being replaced and with, um, trees that are on the list, so.
We have thirteen native species trees.
Yes, I think there were five trees that were of question and those five have been replaced, so, um, so, you know, everything should be taken care of. It looks like everything is, is, um, is moving along nicely over there, so. Thank you.
All right.
It's positive.
You know, yeah. Thank you.
And all the committees that worked on this project, it's a long, long, entirely long process and it's just wonderful to see.
All right, thank you.
Can I make one comment to that? Mr. Carter, we also appreciate what you did at town meeting too, so with your help, so we have, we haven't forgotten how you helped with trying to get those articles passed.
You're giving me some dilemmas in these close calls about handling of an agenda, okay. Consent agenda. I'm gonna hold C, E.
Do you want to do advisor committee in the joint meeting first?
Uh, they're not here, right?
Um, they, they may
Yeah.
Some of them coming by Zoom.
Okay.
Andrew, do you know who's here?
We posted it for seven fifteen, so.
Yeah, we don't have many.
Still fifteen minutes away.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'm sorry. I'm not used to being ahead.
I know.
It's on for seven fifteen, right?
Yeah.
Seven fifteen, yeah.
We were but it's too late, okay. So on the consent agenda, I was gonna hold C, E, and G.
And I want
Are there any other holds?
A, A.
Okay.
Minutes comments.
So that would leave B, D, F, and H, right?
Yes.
I move the I move that the board approve consent agenda items B, D, F, and H.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Sam, you have some edits on that?
Yep, some small ones. The night, September 19th. Line 149, Fayah Creed is misspelled. Spelled properly in the next one.
Yes.
And, and then in line 50, 158, Hopes instead of Hope. That's it for that one.
Okay.
And 1024, line 138, Dean Sibelli, two words. Line 139 should be DPW. And line 140, Slatkowicz.
Does anyone else have any proposed edits to the...
And then 1117, I've got a few.
11-7.
11-7, sorry, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, line 15, Pomfret is misspelled.
Yep.
And line 110, I'd say ARPA Sidewalk Funds. Add funds. And line 205, it's not East Main Street, it's Main Street. And line 226, Ms. Cook's second was repeated. Repeated sentence there. All major comments, thank you.
It were. I meant it, that's why I did it twice.
It was a strong second.
It was.
And that's it for that. No, no comment on 1129.
Um, I move that the board approve the...
Maybe I think Marguerite's gonna comment.
I have one, it's a third planner, but it's a minute of 1024. Oh, sorry. Sorry, 1024, line 80, where am I? 80, line 80, Mr. Hamilton asked if there were any additional expenses for the St. Marks Park project, and if we're gonna call it that, it should be the St. Marks Street Park project.
Fair enough?
Yep.
So add street?
Yeah.
I would...
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any others before I make the motion?
Nope.
I move that the board approve the open session meeting minutes of September 19, October 24, November 7, and November 29, 2023, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so C and E, we will table until the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and then on G, did you wanna speak to item G, Mark?
Yes, so the one item, the one thing with G, first, I just want to acknowledge, this is your annual renewal for all of your alcohol, your beer and wine, your entertainment, your Class I, Class II common visual licenses. The Select Board's office, you know, does yeoman's work in trying to make sure that everything is all done, all inspections are done, all fees are paid, and it's, it's, it's a lot of work every year. Melanie Otska in, in, in your office is the one who takes care of this, and I just need to acknowledge her, because every year, it, it seems to get harder and harder, and every year, for the first meeting in December, she has gotten these to you with, without any stragglers. I'm gonna create one straggler tonight, but it was at request, not because of anything else. And that one is RZND Motors Class II license at, at 264 Quarterville Road. As you're aware, they recently went through a, a process through the, the ZBA to increase the number of cars for sale. And there was, ZBA approved that and increased the limit up to 12. The previous ZBA decision was two. But there were conditions that needed to be held. The, the, the biggest one was a site plan review before planning board. That has just recently been scheduled for January 8th. And our, and I got a, an email from Peter Bemis late this afternoon asking if this could be tabled until the next meeting to try to see how this might be addressed in the interim between now and when site plan review can be completed, because there can be no increase in the spaces until after the conditions set forth by ZBA have been met. So it's been asked to be continued to the 11, to the 12/19 meeting.
But tabled in terms of renewal of the license there?
Yes, continued, continued at least to the, to the 19th meeting. The, the issue, Sam, is that the only, the only, the only decision that is on the books with ZBA is two.
Right.
Okay? So until this is resolved, I'm not sure what latitude the board may have, and I need to see council's opinion on what Mr. Bemis has sent.
Okay.
As to whether the board has any latitude to simply approve the new license for, for, for calendar year 24 at two, until the conditions are met for the ZBA decision to increase it to 12. At that point, they would need to come back to the board and request the increase.
Okay. Are there any other applications on here that have an outstanding issue with any of the, like, the Building Department, or the Board of Health, or anybody else?
I am not aware. We've had sign-offs from everybody.
Okay, good.
Okay, so everything, so all the inspections have been taken care of, and, and again, you know, appreciate, you know, the Fire Department, Building Department, Health Department, all doing what they need to do to make sure we had everything done. Didn't want to bring you anything that had any dangling, you know, issues that would hold up getting licenses done.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Brian, do you wanna speak to the Taxation Aid Committee?
Are we gonna vote on the licenses?
Oh, sorry, okay.
With the exception...
Sorry, thinking, yeah, that's important.
It is.
Um, I move that the board approve the 2024 licenses, excepting RZNB.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
So after we did that, now do you wanna... That would have shut down a lot of businesses for no reason.
That's right. Happy, happy holidays.
So the board took up a request a year, year and a half ago for the Taxation Aid Committee to get $12,000 in ARPA funds transferred into their fund so we could go through our annual application process for primarily seniors in town who are in need of financial distress. And we have an application process every February, and through that, we select seniors to receive grants to get off their tax bill per year. The problem is, the fund is, it was started a few, it's been around a while, but we became active four or five years ago, and it had about $50,000 in it. Not a lot of money. It's starting to go down to below 30 now, so it's not gonna be around forever. We're trying to stretch it out as much as we can and trying to figure ways to get it refunded, but this is one of the ways that could help this committee continue on at least a little longer. And the primary, primarily, the income that's been there has come from donations, from tax bills. Scholarship Committee is another one that gets donations from tax bills. So it's just not enough. It's, they don't get a whole lot in any, you know, annual timeframe. So the board did grant, again, $12,000 a year and a half ago, I think it was, or somewhere around there.
July 12, 22.
Okay, so pretty close. And I think you saw the kind of, in the packet, hopefully you saw the, the people that we have served there. It was surprising to me. The committee, by the way, just as an aside, is created by statute. I'm on it, the Board of, the Chair of the Board of Assessors, and three residents are on it. In fact, one, I think, is gonna be new, coming before you to be appointed soon. So it's, it's all by statute and everything, but, but I was surprised, just as an aside, to the, how the ages of the people and how much, you know, they, how long they've lived in town and how much, you know, they do struggle with their, their tax bill. So it's, it's a really good use of funds. The residents have been very appreciative. We don't release their names. The only reason I know them is because I have to pay the actual tax bill, but it's all confidential. So we were just, the committee would just respectfully ask that you consider that. I, I am aware, I think there's money in the ARPA fund that has the, the...
Tax relief.
Tax relief, yes.
Yeah.
That's the word I was looking for.
Yeah.
So that's all I have to say. I, I represent the committee. The, the committee chair would be here, but the committee chair, who was wonderful, Liz Kesselman, had to do other things in town, so she left the board a little while ago. We just haven't appointed another chair. So I was elected to just come and speak.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I speak to this? Okay, so just to remind everybody that one of the recommendations of the ARPA Committee was to put $70,000 of ARPA money into the general economic relief bucket for individuals, right? So 70 started out, we did vote 12 on 7/12/22, so there's 58,000 left. So I believe the plan may be to vote on this on the 19th.
Well, I think, I, I...
Tonight?
Yeah.
I'm ready, yeah.
Okay. It's, we can do it tonight, but this is where you gotta be careful, Brian, and I've talked to Carla about this. Remember, the rule is, for ARPA, it's got to be committed by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26. So I said, Carla, given this really still is town money, even though it's in this bucket, right? It's still, it's all the town's, you know, financials, right? We have to be careful and make sure it gets spent. And if you've got 25 or either now, you know, money's fungible, we've gotta do something to show that we're spending the ARPA money first, right? It needs to go out the door first, before anything else goes. So you'll have to work with Carla to make sure we account for this so that we don't end up having to call it back.
Yeah, last time, just internally, we documented it as ARPA money, so I imagine that would probably meet the standard, but...
Separate bucket, whatever the auditors would require, yeah, yeah.
So that, we'll leave at that point, we've done, we're down to 58, 46, right? So at maybe a January, February meeting, we're gonna have to maybe move the rest of it out someplace else, because there's, it won't, we won't have time to do this again. So I'm, I'm fine with the 12/19, that's what I'm gonna do.
I've, I've attended a bunch of these meetings historically, and I think this group does a great job and a surprising number of people facing hardship in town, and a lot of seniors particularly, who are in a house that has increased property value and increased property taxes and very fixed incomes. So I think, and, and the committee, I think, does a great job of finding people who truly deserve the support. So I don't think we're wasting this money at all, so I'm strongly supportive of it.
Well, I feel like this is in the same bucket as what the goal is, which is to help people be able to afford to live here. I mean, this is not the house, but this is helping with one of the operating, the biggest operating cost of a house, so I'm all for it.
And I'd also say, this committee actually worked pretty hard over the last couple of years finding donations from the local business community, and they weren't very successful with it. I hope that they'll continue that effort, because again, I think it's a pretty worthy objective, and finding another source of funding would be really helpful.
Yes, we, we tried to go to some of the local banks and stuff like that. But yeah, we will revisit that for sure.
Good.
Marguerite, did you?
My, my question was, do you have seniors who you have to turn away?
So far, not, because we set the grant amounts per year. We have a little bit of flexibility, you know, it doesn't have to be a certain amount, so we've been able to fold in what we wanna spend per year for all the...
Do you, do you think the program might expand to include more people later? Just, you've been working with it for a long time.
Yeah, um, yes, there's been a couple additional as we've moved along. We've actually been waiting for that to happen. We've tried to spread the word, actually, through the Senior Center and the Doll Men's Club and some of the other avenues that we've, we've actually tried to reach out to people, so. It's just like with the Trust Fund Committee, I find that people are just, you know, they, they, there's a little bit of pride involved with older people and their sensitivity to confidentiality and all of that. And, you know, we try to reach out and assure them that that's not an issue, but some people just very nervous about asking for help.
I almost see it as a form of, of town social security. If people have, have contributed for that, for that amount of time to this town, it's like they could get something back. I think that'd be good, but anyway. And other, other ways of fundraising, I think, maybe the newsletter, some, some other means. Because I think sometimes when the thing comes in, the tax bill, it's not always, it's sort of briefly stated.
Right.
It might, there might be more expansion on, on what that, you know, $10 would involve.
We did put it in, I think, it made it to the Town Administrator's Report this week. Not sure how many people read that, but hopefully a lot.
A lot.
A lot.
Well read.
But we did, we have before put in the tax bill, because the board actually authorizes what to put in the tax bill, but we've put in aid forms that are, actually, Sam, Mr. Tyvis has worked with this too, where we've put together forms that show various aid available in town and stuff, and we probably should do that again as a flyer.
Yeah, anyway. Well, thank you for your work on this, by the way.
Oh, sure, it's, it's my pleasure.
Um, yeah, thank you for doing this. I'm kinda surprised at how little money we're spending in this area. And I suspect that the need is greater than, and that I would, I would be in favor of moving more funds into the, more, more of the money we've identified in ARPA into this fund, and then encouraging you to work with the Senior Center and perhaps the, the local religious organizations to make sure that we are reaching out to people who have a need. I mean, you know, property taxes are a big chunk of a senior citizen's expenses. I mean, I, even me, and I'm not, I'm far away, far from this list, but property taxes are a big chunk of my budget. And, you know, I, I, I shudder to think what it's like if you're living on social security and you have a house that's appreciated. So I think we need to, we need to be more proactive. There are more people, I think, in town that, that could need, need this help, and, and, you know, we have these funds, and we need to spend them, so we should spend them.
So the problem, again, is these ARPA deadlines. So if we do 12 tonight, which I think we should, right?
Yep.
You can still come back, you know, there's a couple more, but it's this year, it's gotta happen this year. So you can come back, there's still 46 left in that bucket, right? So you still got some time to come back with more requests. I assume you're doing the taxes for fiscal year '24? That's what's being abated now, or being...
Um, the actual money will be spent in the fall, well, we could move it ahead, but it'll be the fall of '24.
So it's gonna be fiscal year '25?
Yes.
Okay. So there will be more, so I agree with, I'd love, but you gotta spend it, that's the problem.
Right, right.
Okay.
But I'd look to the committee. Write that down now.
But I'd be happy to have a conversation with the committee and come back.
Yeah, I'd look to the committee.
I'd be really happy to have that.
I'd look to the committee for a proposal.
Okay.
Say, how, how should we think about expanding this, if that makes sense?
To get it spent quickly.
So your presentation was so successful that...
That's right.
They wanted to give you more money.
Hey, you walked away with more.
Good job.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that tonight, that we approve 12 more thousand dollars out of the ARPA bucket labeled general economic relief for residents, to be effective immediately.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, appreciate that.
So...
Again, I can't see who's on, online.
Yeah, um, do you have everyone here?
Maybe anyone else?
No, unless J.
Okay.
The letter J.
Cause what I was gonna suggest is, one of the things we could do, because Mr. Hegarty's here, we could have him speak to the, his ARPA request, and then maybe some more people come over from advisory, and then you've got, okay, all right? Okay. So now we're gonna talk about the item under Other Matters A. So in the packet is a email that Mr. Hegarty had sent to the board on November 7, and it's asking the Select Board to consider using ARPA funds to pay $56,634 to scan 10,297 historically significant documents stored in the town's clerk's office and cannot be scanned using in-house scanners. And as in the packet, there's a question about whether it's CPC eligible? And I think the answer is that this particular purpose that you're looking for is not Community Preservation Act eligible, because you can fill in the rest of it there. It has to do with the nature... It has to do with the nature of the document and whether you're saving it or getting rid of it, okay?
Thank you. Initially, I had intended to ask for these funds through CPC, but, um, and speaking to the chair of the CPC, there's some guidance from the Department of Revenue that says, um, let me back up. These particular ten thousand pages of documents, they don't need preservation work, either because preservation work had already been done many years ago and they had not been scanned, or because of the physical condition of them, all right? So, um, when I talked to the chair of the CPC about asking for use of CPC money to scan these documents to have, so we'd have the data to be able to share and put it out there, there's D R guidance that says unless you're physically preserving the physical item itself, you can't spend money to scan the records. So, these items don't fit any one of those umbrellas, all right? Independent of this, I do have a separate request to CPC for records that will be scanned and for our archivist's time is over. So, we'll left with these ten thousand pages, significant documents, they're at least all fifty years old, many of them are a couple hundred years old or better. And, um, uh, because of their condition and because of the odd size of them, we can't use the scanners that we have in-house with the seniors we have using that. Some of them have to go to a specialized scanner that actually looks like a scale. It was up and down because of the size of them. So, these are things that we cannot do in-house. We have scanned thousands and thousands of pages of documents in-house, but these, uh, these can't. So, um, my intent is, uh, to ask for the CPC, uh, ARPA funds for this. My backup plan is if ARPA funds are not available for this, I'm requesting two-thirds of this money in my budget for this year and one-third next year. But if this money was approved, I'll pull the trigger on this almost immediately with requests, the bids from companies to get going on it.
All right, so here, my, um, first reaction to this is, I remember looking at the last ARPA tracker, and we, we don't have as much money left as we really kind of might think we do, in that this last budget cycle where we used five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money to offset capital articles, and, um, now we're heading into the budget cycle, and we're going to have, what we're going to propose with the advisory is that we hear from capital on a budget meeting on Saturday, January sixth, about what they're... So, my initial response is, I would like to be flexible and wait to see how all this shakes out, um, through this budget cycle before we decide. Basically, to consider this as part of the budget cycle, about whether we use ARPA for this or how we act on your request to, you know, incrementally fund parts of it through, uh, operational budget. Yes, Marguerite?
Um, I... I was, um, texting with Kevin Miller, who's going to get here at eight-thirty because he's teaching, he's getting here about another item on the agenda. But I happened to mention, um, that Jim wanted to do this, and Kevin had said that his stor, if I'm quoting off my text, "Yes, historical voted in favor of Jim's proposal last Wednesday. I expect to be on hand for the latter stages of your meeting." So, historical is supporting, um, making some, um, movement forward with this. And I can't speak to the rest of it, because that will take Kevin, and he's not going to get here until eight-thirty.
Can I clarify that? CP, uh, historical voted to support my request for CPC funds, which is, it's kind of a two-step. Most of the money we're asking for CPC is to have an archivist, uh, continue working for us part-time, uh, to be able to take these documents and put them up to the website that I mentioned at the bottom of this, right? And he would work on some of these documents that are being scanned. So, the two of these go hand in hand. That's actually what, they understand that the archivists will work on these documents, but they did not take a vote on the, to support a particular funding source. They did support the intent of what we're looking to do.
So, I agree with Andrew that, um, I certainly support getting these things scanned, um, I'd be silly not to, but I don't want to make a decision on ARPA tonight. We've still got some time, so we're going to have to make a decision on a couple things, January, February, including the National Grid parcel. Um, we've also got something coming our way that may need ARPA money, which is, um, possibly the design work for some culvert issues we have. So, we've got some things going on. So, I just don't want to decide tonight, we know more about the budget, which we know very little about right now, as far as whether they're going to have to throw some money at the budget again this year, like we did last year. Um, so I, I just like to table this until we know more about that in probably February, which is plenty of time to decide whether it goes in your budget or whether we do ARPA. So, I'm all for getting this done. Um, the question is, what bucket it comes out of as far as the, um, funding for it?
Yeah, um, quick question, uh, I'm assuming there is no urgent need? Is there's things that aren't going to, you know, disintegrate, you know, in months? You're, you're thinking?
No, nothing's going to disintegrate.
Okay, so, so if we pause, could you just describe in, in general terms, the class of documents that you're, what are they?
Um, I didn't bring a list with me here today, but there were records from the seventeen hundreds, uh, lists of residents, tax lists, people that participated in the Civil War, uh, some assessments-type records, uh, just a whole smorgasbord of these church records. Uh, they basically tell the story of Southborough.
Okay.
So, what we've been able to do, um, uh... To my knowledge, Boston's the only other place that's done what we're doing. So, what we've been able to do is, is through several seniors over several years and some money that we had through CPC from prior years, and using the, uh, through the library, through the, uh, what's it called? But the Massachusetts Library System scanned series of documents.
MBLC?
Yes. We've been able to not just scan the documents, because honest to God, that doesn't do you a lot of good to scan them and put them on a hard drive, but...
It's indexing that's the issue.
Right, but also, not just indexing, we worked with Matt Probst to put a website, it's oh-one-seven-seven-two-history.org. And these records go up, but in addition, they have, uh, a story that says what the document is and why it's significant. So, we just don't have a picture, but it's a, it's really neat, neat, neat stuff to do. And that's what we're trying to do, is to tie all this together, um, as a pretty cool thing. And, uh, uh, but, you know, for example, uh, who asked me today? Somebody asked me about the annual report from the thirties or something. Well, that through the B P L is online now, it's all in a series, entire series. So, that's what we're looking to do, have all the records in one spot, and, uh, that people can actually, uh, make, uh, make sense of it and, and have, have value. So, that's, it's going to take us a couple of years to, to put all this together, but I, my goal is to have all this done for the tricentennial.
And when you scan them, do you O C R scan them?
When we can, but again, a lot of these were done in cursive.
Ooh, all right.
Back in the day.
So...
For example, uh, one of the interesting documents we have, which is actually in excellent shape, is a document signed by both Sam Adams and John Hancock. And it was, uh, when Hancock was the, uh, the governor and Adams was the president of the senate, and it had to do with somebody complaining about double taxed by mob, and Southborough. And what's really cool is this, before we had a U.S. currency, so they agreed, and they ordered the refund in, uh, pound sterling and fenny.
Well, that sounds like something we should, that's subject to the CPC, right? Because we would want to preserve that, right?
Um, actually, believe it or not, it didn't need to be, because it's such great shape. Little bit of trivia. The literacy rate in America skyrocketed after the Civil War, and it's because prior to the Civil War, paper was extraordinarily expensive. And right around the time of the Civil War, people, uh, realized that they could make paper out of pulp from trees. So, the price of the, uh, paper went down, uh, like a rock, and that led to literacy. But the problem is, they didn't consider the acidity of the, of the documents. So, we have documents from the seventeen hundreds that are in better shape than documents from the nineteen twenties. And it was only a few decades ago that they started taking the acid out of the paper. So, one of the things we've had to do with some of the documents was to treat them to reduce the acidity of the documents, to prevent further deterioration. But it is kind of mind-boggling that we have things from seventeen twenty-seven, the original document when the people asked, um, to split off from Northborough because it was too far a drive to go to church on Sunday. That's literally why Southborough's formed, all right? Um, and that's, uh, it's, it's scribbled all over the side, and it's kind of a funny way it's written. But that's in much better shape than some of the documents we have from the, uh, early nineteen hundreds.
And to Al's point, I think that it would be great, ultimately, to be able to index this, to say, you know, show me all the references to Sally Jones and all of this, to be able to go in and search.
You'd be able to see it through that, if you go to that website, I think you'll like what you see.
Yep, yep.
But in addition, we've identified, uh, a dozen or so documents that are so significant, uh, I might have a bit of money in my budget, hopefully, this year, to be able to produce those on some pretty hard stock, and then give them to schools to tell the story to the kids. Kind of a nice thing. And we've gone down to the schools every year and give, uh, we spend a day with election stuff, but also bring the books down and to show the kids some cool stuff.
I, I want to attest that Jim can hold the attention of a seven-year-old for, for half an hour, uh, rummaging through the records. I'm not the seven-year-old.
Don't tell him that, that was me, yeah.
Where are the documents now?
Uh, the documents are in my vault. Yes, outside my office there, yeah, yeah. So, um, which is not a climate-controlled room, so we have some issue with that to address down the road as well. But they're all in-house right now, and, uh, um, uh, what I will start doing is I will start working on pricing and bids and so forth to get this going. And when we do parcel this out to a vendor, it'll be piecemeal at a time. I just don't want to give everybody ten thousand pages, could never get done. It'll give a slice at a time that we can manage this out and make it man for everybody.
Could you talk briefly about the, um, is that archivist the same one that was doing documents that are in the lib, in, in the Southborough Library right now, or is it a different archivist?
No, uh, he is a, uh, a fellow from California that came to grad school, and we basically kidnapped him when he arrived here and took him to Jake's for breakfast. Uh, and that's how we grabbed him, we knew somebody from CPC that he doesn't quite know how we knew he was, he was coming here. But, uh, uh, he's worked for us a little bit, we've had some extra money, some CPC money we've been able to use, and, uh, he just finished his degree, uh, and, uh, he wants to continue working part-time for us as he gets full-time employment. And, uh, I think you've, have you met him? Yeah, I know that, uh, folks on historical have met him. This kid's really special. He's really, really good. If you get a chance to look at that website, it's really, uh, he's really done a masterful job to provide, uh, tell the story. And it's just, it's, it's a really nice thing, done a good job. But he's, I mean, literally, I'm not kidding you when I say he's looked at every single piece of paper here and in the basement. He's found lots of stuff we didn't know existed. He's found stuff that belonged to other departments, he's found, um... We have a document where a lady that was born in the forties, uh, requested a delayed birth, that her birth wasn't recorded when she was born. So, she provided the documentation, and we did the paperwork, I don't know, fifty years ago, whatever it was, that her birth date was, I forget, now let's say July the fourth. Well, he found the original document, she was actually born on July the third. So, now I've got a conundrum, because her, she's lived her whole life with the wrong thing, she's on social security and the rest of it, and maybe you let sleeping dogs lie, I don't know.
Did, did we find any multimillion-dollar historical documents in there?
No, but we, uh, not, besides the one that went sideways. But we do have a safe or two in the basement, uh, nobody knows the combination to, and one of these days, we should have somebody cut them open instead of...
Crack it.
Jimmy Hoffa's inside or something.
That's right.
That's some pretty cool stuff.
Does it sound like there's a consensus to just hold on the...
Defer for now, yeah.
With a whole lot of interest to support, uh, making sure that we, um, um, preserve our documents.
Great.
Okay. Andrew, uh, Mr. Faff.
We're one short.
Ready to, uh, still one short? You have a quorum?
Vanessa, we're still one short, right? Okay, no, not yet.
One short of a quorum. Interesting, okay. Okay, so the next item sequentially on the agenda, Marguerite, is the, um, Town Common Old Burial Ground. All right, but, um, you want to just hold that until... Yep. Okay. Yeah, Sam, um, do you have an update for us on Public Works Planning Board?
Yes.
Okay.
Happy to do that, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I see Mr. Lit in the back there, who has actually done, uh, almost all the real work on this, so we appreciate his dedication and effort. Tim and, um, Debbie Maria and I have been following up on the effort to reconstitute the Special Act that created the Department of Public Works back in nineteen ninety-one. And the objective is to amend that Special Act, to reestablish the appointed tree warden, because that's been a, a problem, uh, given that the Select Board is probably not qualified to be the tree warden. Um, second, to dissolve the Public Works Planning Board. And third, update references to the Select Board in that, uh, Act. It talks about the Board of Selectmen. And then, the second track is to replace the Public Works Planning Board with a standing bylaw committee called the Public Works Advisory Committee, which is town-controlled, and it, uh, meets the current state helder's expectations. And we've been working with the, the D P W Superintendent to make sure he is on board with that, and he, I think, is supportive of having a, an advisory group to help him deal with the variety of public works issues. And so, as part of that process, uh, Tim particularly has developed a project plan. Uh, we've got draft articles for the twenty-twenty-four Annual Town Meeting to authorize the, the Select Board to petition the legislature for amendment of the Special Act and to create a new bylaw, to create Public Works Advisory Committee, uh, when that amendment to the Special Act is effective, whenever that happens to be. And we've also got some other supporting material, uh, to communicate what's going on here. And finally, uh, next steps include, um, continue to, um, review and refine the documents here, uh, can, uh, talk with our, um, with Town Council to get any input that he may have for it, um, to continue to develop a consensus around the future of the tree warden, which is another issue that's been a topic of active communication, conversation historically. I don't think we have all the answers there yet, but, uh, I think we got the right people involved. And we need then to engage our representative Senator Eldridge and Representative Donahue to file the Special Act legislation when Town Meeting approves, uh, the request. So, um, the, uh, the timing on this is that if Town Meeting approves this in March, then the petition to the legislature can go forward in April. And, um, uh, Town Council has opined that this is a pretty low-profile issue. So, it's not likely to generate a lot of contention or whatever. So, it's, uh, likely that, uh, it could happen fairly quickly, but sometimes the legislature gets bottlenecked on things, and so, just hard to predict. But, uh, timing, hopefully, uh, by the end of twenty-twenty-four, January twenty-twenty-five, um, we've got this done. So, again, a lot of activity in terms of communication, and making sure people are informed and on board. Got some work to do before Town Meeting to communicate what's going on here. And, uh, so we're on track, I think.
And then, how are you in terms, so this is something we're going to put on the warrant for this?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, two, two things. One is the, uh, request for, uh, amendment to the Special Act.
Yep.
To take out the P W P B.
Yeah, yep, and to change the Select Board, uh, references and to, um, make the tree warden an appointed tree warden. And to, to then, um, uh, create a bylaw for the Public Works Advisory Committee. That would be a new bylaw to be effective when the Special Act is in effect, ultimately.
And then a target for kind of having a draft, which the three of you have worked through, and then would be for this board to mark up and actually...
Yep, and we do have that draft. Tim has actually drafted a bunch of these documents, and so, we will, uh, again, get that to the board at some point when the warrant opens.
I think you can do it for the nineteenth, first meeting in January, I'm just trying to where we could...
I think we could do the nineteenth. Do you agree?
Do it tonight, if you wanted it.
No.
Uh, we don't have...
I know you don't want it, but...
Warrant's not open yet, so... But anyway, uh, again, I kudos to Tim for doing all the heavy lifting on this, as, as he often does, so, thank you.
So, to be clear, though, as far as what is going to be proposed, um, the two sentences that created the P W P B in the Special Act are going to be deleted.
Correct.
Right? Then, the tree warden, we are going to hopefully change, as the Select Board is not the tree warden?
Yep.
So, uh, Tim Litwoodland rode for the, for the record.
You wanted to say your, we know who you are, but just so you...
I just did.
Oh, okay, good.
When you were, so, um, the... Train of thought here, the, um, I guess two things. One is, is just as a technical matter, prior to the Special Act, the tree warden was actually elected, not appointed. Was on the, um, on, on the town election, and prior to that, was actually elected in Town Meeting. The last one that I can find was Brian Morrow. The change to the Special Act, as, as Sam has said, will, um, remove the references to the Board of Selectmen and... to the Board of Selectmen and tree warden, and will replace it with an appointed by the Selectmen tree warden with operational supervision by the DPW Superintendent. But that's different from authority. Authority comes from the state.
I'm asking for a very practical reason. So if this goes flying through, like Jay said, it, it could, right? Um, let's say it's all done by July 1st. We need to make sure that the budget for fiscal year '25 reflects the cost of the tree warden.
Right.
Yes. And I, I brought that to your attention at the last meeting. I've, um, talked a little bit with Bill Kundoff about this, but exactly what the budget needs to be depends on what the final structure of the new tree warden office looks like. Technically, it's an office of tree warden, it's not a person. And then, and so the, the questions there become, um, things like, does the tree warden have to be a certified arborist? Um, what happens with the current tree warden designee? Um, and, you know, do we continue to focus almost exclusively on removing trees and hazards? Or do we do a more active plan that involves planting and prevention and disease treatment and such, which is more common in, in tree wardens? So that's the stuff.
And are you working on the answers to all that as part of this?
We're doing our best.
Is.
I don't think we have consensus yet, and, you know, the players include, uh, the Planning Board, um, uh, you know, our little, you know, three-person, uh, working group and Bill, and for that matter, Chris Leroy has been involved in, in, uh, some of the discussions as well. Um, there, at the moment, there isn't a consensus yet. I mean, I have, I personally have some ideas on, on, you know, what the size of a placeholder ought to be in the budget, but I don't think anyone's there yet either.
Yep.
But it's not a small number.
But Bill is aware of the issue and not clear what he wants to do at this point.
But is there consensus on removing Select Board as?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
The articles, I've changed, I've recently changed maybe six words. They've been stable since September, and I don't see that changing at all. What's open is, once the articles take effect, the current tree warden designee goes away because the Board of Selectmen goes away, and we need to replace the Board of Selectmen with something. And the question is, what is that something?
Andrew, could I just?
Yeah.
Hi, while I've got you here and you here and Deb here also, I can only foresee one problem in Town Meeting with this, which is the sense that the DPW and whoever was the acting tree warden designee were responsible for a lot of trees coming down, and it was felt that there was no, there was no control over what the DPW was doing. So I can see someone in Town Meeting standing up and saying, "Well, what if they decide to make a road here and cut everything down? Who will have oversight over the DPW and the new tree warden?"
So, the, the authority of a, of a tree warden, once we get this Board of Selectmen out of the way, comes from the state. The tree warden has powers and duties that are, uh, not from the town, but they're from state statutes. So, um, you know, you can't overrule him on a, on a matter of professional opinion.
But what if the sense is that there will be no oversight and they decide they're going to put a giant road down the middle and cut all the trees down?
Appointment will be by the Board of Selectmen. So you have whatever control you have over other appointees. And the thing I've been pushing for of late in term has been, we really need a plan for what happens afterwards. And that plan needs to be something that sets out, um, not just the structure, but what our policies are, you know? Is our goal to preserve every last tree, no matter what it costs? Is our goal, uh, to only deal with, with hazards or what's happening in between? And what's our goal for, uh, ongoing planting? And I think that's an area where the Planning Board will have a lot to say, um, in terms of developing it, and I would expect that you folks would also want to weigh in once we have something written. Now, this is a little bit beyond the mission that you folks gave me, but it seems to me that, um, I can't just, uh, wipe you out as, as the tree warden and not worry about what happens afterwards.
But Marguerite, the answer to your question is, if the, if the one person we appoint as tree warden is not following state law, and there's a lot of protections in state law, then we replace that person.
So if this comes to pass, as you have outlined, um, and we have a new tree warden that's not the Select Board, um, when there is a need for a hearing for a tree to come down, whatever, start with non-scenic roads first, he has the hearing, he conducts the hearing, no Select Board, right? Scenic road, it'd be that person, I shouldn't say he, that person and Planning Board, right? Okay.
But there are, but, you know, there are provisions for appeals that might still involve you, but hopefully, most of the work happens without, uh, consuming your time.
Yep.
My, my recommendation is, is that you defer to the greatest extent practical to the head of the DPW in terms of how we structure and staff, that is, whether this is a stipend position or, uh, an actual individual, um, that, you know, we, we ought to be, uh, we ought to be letting our, our managers manage.
Well, uh, yes, uh, up to a point, I think. The, the real question, and I'm not sure you want to spend a lot of time on, more time on it this evening, but, but just to get you in the loop a little bit, um, the state law requires certain, uh, qualifications of a tree warden. What the state statute says is very vague, and there are multiple opinions on that. Um, there's a, there's a camp that says, um, if you've taken a correspondence course in flower planting, you know, then you're, you're qualified, right? And there's another camp that says, um, you need to be someone with a college degree and a certified arborist and all the rest of it. And I don't know how to come down on that unless we have a plan that says, you know, here's the policy, here are the goals.
Um, my, my, my point is, I would let the head of the DPW thread that needle, not, not cast that into, uh, legislation.
It's not cast into legislation, but it is something that the, uh, boards and committees will need to agree on.
Yeah, we need to clarify that going forward. I think we're working on that, so.
Well, the current tree warden certainly doesn't have those qualifications. You're looking at the five of us, so we, you know?
Five of ours.
Okay, Al, so, except for Al.
Did any of them live? Wait a minute.
I own two chainsaws, so.
I do chainsaws, but I don't, I wouldn't claim to be a tree warden.
Okay. So do you think, you think you could actually have something for us to, like a, a draft?
Yep. Well, Tim has already developed a number of documents, so I think we've got stuff that we can.
I can send it to you this evening.
Okay.
Talk about.
All right. Is there anything further for us to discuss?
Uh, thank you for your hard work.
Yep. Thank you again, yep.
Okay, um, Andrew.
I think we got a quorum now.
Good, all right.
Send the constables out to round them up.
Who is the opposite?
That's right.
Do you need, do you need to call your meeting to order? Brian, do you want to come up for this too?
Uh, I'm going to call the Advisory Committee meeting to order at 7:49.
So just to begin, I see is kind of one of our, our goals for this joint meeting are, um, really to lay out a process for how we're going to approach, um, approving the budget, um, that's put on the Town Meeting warrant. Um, and the, the idea that we, we've got working so far is that, um, Brian has put together a list that he circulated, and the copy is here, of kind of a consent agenda of, um, non-contro, non-controversial budgets. Um, we can get into that. And, um, we're also thinking of planning a, what we did last year, which is a Saturday in January, probably the 6th is the one that would work, the, I, date we've identified so far that would work the best, where we'd have Capitol come in the morning, present the recommendations of the Capitol, CIPC, um, and then we would bring in the bigger departments, um, and the, the ones that we wanted to focus on, uh, this year, the big three of, uh, police, fire, DPW on the town side, also to have IT as part of that as well. And then schools, if they're ready, because we, we're having this meeting much earlier than we did last year. Um, and then work out a plan for how we would deal with everything in between, the stuff which is on here, and all the big stuff we work on on Saturday.
I think what we talked about the other day too was, so we have liaisons for, uh, a lot of the budgets from Advisory. In the past, Select Board had liaisons to most of the same ones, um, but the thought process was this year, have the Select Board liaisons be to those big five, so schools, police, fire, DPW, and IT, and then everything in between Advisory would cover off independently, so we don't need multiple, uh, joint meetings in between now and the Saturday meeting. Um, and then, you know, for our committee, does the sixth work for, Adam, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Marcy?
Yes.
And Howard, if you can. Might be on mute, he was in the car. I'll check with Howard when he's ready. Um, so yeah, so we'll double-check the rest of it, but yeah, so far the, yeah.
All right. So then, um, so for Al and Marguerite, just to give some more context of what we did last year, it's not, it was the first year that I had participated in something like this, but I think it might have happened in other, no, okay.
This really was the first.
We called it a budget summit.
You used to do the Saturday meetings years ago, right?
We did, yeah, we did one, I can, one we did. It was a long time ago, a long time. But you're right.
So, the idea was, instead of having, you know, the department heads of the biggest departments come in and make a presentation to Advisory, and then six days later they make it, exactly. So you consolidate all that. The, the meeting was good last Saturday. Um, it went a long time. It began at like nine o'clock in the morning and ended at.
It was over eight hours.
It was over eight hours. That's a lot to do on a Saturday, and, um, everything took longer than expected. We probably dealt with a dozen, eight, 12? Um, and I thought it, that was a lot, right? We also had, and this is a big difference, last year, Capitol made its presentation already by this time, last week of November, so we had a sense of what were the major, uh, potential Capitol articles. Um, so we dealt with Capitol earlier and operational later. This year, Capitol is going to be wrapping up its work in December, so the earliest they could present is January. The idea is spend the morning working on Capitol and, uh, the afternoon on the big operational budgets that have the most, you know, issues to discuss.
To kind of do the low-hanging fruit early, get that pretty well set aside, so that when we get to that Saturday session, that's where this bunch of the budget's going to be, and that's where we could start the discussion of what would the rate be and what would the year-over-year increase be, and we could start to toggle things around while we have the joint session.
Yeah, I remember last year it was library and, and youth and families were the last two of the long day, and by that time, everyone's, um, eyes were spinning in their head. But it was very effective, it was much better than doing back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Um, does this sound like a plan to everyone?
Yep, much better process than.
I mean, when you, when you look at it, these, especially leaving out even IT, police, fire, DPW, schools, they control the budget. It don't go the right way, forget all the little ones, they're not going to change anything. Um, and it's really schools, um, um, number one. So I think this makes, this is much more efficient, and the idea, you know, so let's see, everybody here's been on Advisory except me, Marguerite, so no offense, Marguerite. So we know how we always went our way, we did everything, we looked at it, everybody had to come and see us at night, then they went and see Select Board, and then we got together and tried to figure out differences. This, to me, is so much more efficient than the old way we did this. Um, so I think that this is going to save a lot of time, be a lot more considerate to the departments and get us to a answer pretty fast.
Although one thing is that we're, we're dealing with it so early this year that I assume we'd be having this discussion and, and coming to a consensus, but it would be before actually voting to approve all the budgets, we'd want to wait and find out what the schools num, number is, which might come later.
Well, I think we'll, we'll get a preliminary view of this.
Yeah.
We won't know necessarily what the state aid is, but we could have a worst-case scenario for the schools.
State aid comes out with the governor in the end of January, and then comes out with the legislature, um, a little bit later, which usually improves it a little bit, so I agree with you. But this will at least give us idea, you know, because we got to still put it all together and see what it looks like. And then, you know, you may have to go back and change things, depending on what it all looks like when it's all truly together and all the missing pieces are there.
Last year we did it on January 28th.
Now, like the, the discussion we just had with Jim Hegarty, that's a classic example of this kind of intermediate budget present consideration that I was thinking of is, you know, could we afford to have this historical document preservation in the operational budget this year? How would we, um, so that's not in the consent agenda that you've prepared, right, Brian? Um, so, Andrew, what are your thoughts on how we should deal with that? Because we're not planning to have him comment.
When we get out of the Saturday meeting.
Okay.
We'll have a feeling of where we're at. I think there might be, there's a lot of Capitol items, a lot of big ticket items that maybe we'll need a follow-up meeting, um, as we look at what the overall budget does. Um, but I think that's going to also need work with Brian to understand bonding timelines, what the debt service would look like, and really looking at it from that perspective. Certainly there's some big ticket items that we're not going to pay out of cash.
So, we've also got to make the ARPA decision too, which will come later as far as how much ARPA money to throw. We got, we've got some money in the, the bucket for tax relief, um, so we've got to do that. So there's just, there, there'll be a lot to be done after this. Those intermediate budgets, library, um, youth and family, um, things like that, um, senior center, as long, you know, we can make a decision, as long as they look like they're just basically increasing by the, um, increase for salaries, then we may say, what else can you do to them? I mean, they're, if that's all it is, what do you do?
And some of them have some other increases, but again, they're five, $10,000, right? It's not going to move the needle tremendously in terms of making them need to come in for multiple sessions, but both of us?
Yep.
That's a conversation we have when we look at the budget together and see if we need to tighten the belt across the board, but I think, I think we'll be okay in the midterm.
So how do people feel about the consent agenda which Brian circulated?
A couple of things. So Brian, did you look at, the rec detailed budget doesn't tie out to this. Um, you know, rec is basically two salaries, and then they, they run the pilot payment through there, but that's an in and out. And then there's some trails money and some open space money there, and if you look at it, it doesn't tie. Um, so there's one.
I'd certainly like.
I just don't know what good it does to approve these until, I mean, these are, this is, this is all easy to do. Reserve fund, do you really, are you happy with a 180? Do you?
Yeah, we took a vote.
Okay, so.
We submitted it. Um, I, I think, again, unless we come up with some kind of strategy to say, "Hey, we're not going to have this item," or cut this from a budget, or maybe we'll look at the reserve fund so we can improve it later, but.
Yeah, I mean, you can improve them all, and we can always change them if we have to, once we put it all together. So that's another way to look at this, it's not written in stone.
Yep. Yep. I guess I remain interested in sort of the high-level view. I've been following the Capitol Committee conversations, and I don't have a good feel at this point about, uh, you know, how much real pressure we're going to be under from some of those things. I think it would be helpful.
It's pretty big.
Yeah, that's my sense, but I think it'd be. Yeah, that's my sense, but I think it'd be very helpful before the January meeting to have some sort of a framework to say, we think it's going to be really challenging or here's some places where we can get some relief and have some sort of game plan going into that, at least at a very high level. So we can focus on the right things there instead of sort of getting everybody educated for the first, you know, couple hours or whatever. If, if we can do that.
There, and I'm probably about to steal Brian's thunder here, but there's a couple of moving, there's a couple of things here that are going to play into this. Um, first of all, personnel board has adopted this new step system.
Yep.
And that's going to be implemented with the SAP employees, right? So that has an impact, a hundred something thousand bucks, um, as far as its overall impact. Um, we've got a whole lot of free cash from fiscal year twenty-three, um, that, um, Brian's recommending that we set a piece of that aside. Um, Al, were you on advisory when the discussion with stabilization philosophy took place, where John wrote his white paper?
Uh, yes, and I remain a firm adherent to that.
Okay, so that discussion has to be had. There's, there's people in this room that are going to disagree with that, so we've got to have that discussion too. Um, so there's just a lot of things. That's why I think the plan is as solid. And then we sit down, look at it and decide, um, where we're going to get to. Social Security COLA, this year's three point two percent. So if we want to try to keep the overall budget something around, you know, three, three and a half, then we'll have to work to, to see what it looks like. We don't know what the split is between, um, tax, our price increases on one, one twenty-four, although Sibelli thinks it's pretty
A little better than last year.
He doesn't think we want to have the big split we've had the last two years. So that whatever's gone up, it's gone up equally between the two types of property. So we're not going to know much more than that. Um, and we took him into, you know, September this year to get it all resolved, so.
But I guess my, my point was that the more context that, uh, whether it's advisory or Brian can sort of provide as a starting point for that discussion, I think that'd be very helpful. We don't know everything, but we know some important things there, I think, and that would be.
Yeah, but there's a lot of hoses. So we, we, we met and we just, there's so many holes, it really doesn't mean a whole lot. Rev care right now is meaningless.
Right now.
Yeah.
So there's just a lot to fill in. So, you know, this, this is a start, right?
Okay.
This is a small start, um.
The, um, the, the, the one item I think, I, I think it behooves us to review any new cap- or expanded capability that's being proposed. So I mean, I see a couple here that are, are, are new capabilities. And, you know, we've said we wanted to have a level funded budget.
Which ones do you think are new capabilities?
Well, so for, I, I see, you know, open space monitoring, I see increased mowing on, on trails. Again, I realize this isn't huge money, but, um, and I, I know that we have, um, probably the biggest headcount increases, uh, that we've experienced in, in twenty years on the table here. And, um, so I think if we are talking about things that go beyond what we did last year, those are things that need, need review.
They do.
So one thing I think which is good about the schedule is that I think all of those requests for additional resources, they're all captured by the, the big departments that we're addressing on Saturday, right? So we can talk about.
Which is one of the reasons we're addressing those, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the other budgets that are here are, you know, recreation, the trails increases, moving it from the DPW. So there should be a corresponding reduction or whatever. Besides that, basically almost all of them are just salary increases with the SAP.
Brian, do you want to speak briefly to the memo you put in the packet about the proposal you have for a, a contribution to the stabilization fund?
Yeah, so I, I, you know, I think we, we need to have that conversation pretty much because we've got, we've got substantial projects coming up and it's, it's, I think we're all aware of the list of them with Neri being the, the giant, the one probably, but, um, the schools discussion. However, the, um, you know, DPW has a quarter of a road project that we were, as mentioned last night, a couple million dollars, two, two and a half million. Um, you know, we've got library that is now starting their, uh, research into a, a new facility, a renovated facility. So we've got some major, major projects that are just multi-million, they're not two, three hundred thousand, they're multi-millions. I just feel like if, again, I think I said this with Kathy and, um, Mr. Faff the other days, that, you know, six years from now, I don't want to be in the room when people say, we've got a twenty percent tax increase and someone could stand up and say, what were they thinking? You know, we did not plan for this? And, um, I think we've got to be very careful. And it, it may be one of those situations, to be honest, where we may have to say no to something and, and just move it around or push it off or.
Yeah.
Or I just, I just don't know if we can squeeze everything in our ability. So, but regardless, there's other thoughts out there, just to, just to, um, I know some people have been, um, suggesting possibly taking some of the free cash, that extra free cash we have and putting it towards capital that we have on the bo- you know, DPW has a lot of capital this year, as we were listening last night, but, um, some ideas like that, maybe because of the, um, the shortage of vehicles right now and the lag time, it's, it's ridiculous. So the thought was if we could maybe allocate some of that free cash at town meeting and get authorization, order those, um, vehicles quicker. We're going to receive them later, much later than normal, so it, it, that kind of argument almost makes sense to me. So I think there are ops, there are different options, but I think we need to, I just think we need to explore each one and see if there's anything reasonable we can all agree on.
But I, I think Brian, that for me at least, one of the real question marks is with our new DPW superintendent, he's finding a number of things like, uh, stormwater pipes, for example, that are basically decaying and because they were corrugated and so the bottom of them is rusting out. And so we've got a number of instances where we've got to do substantial replacement of those things. And what we don't want, I think, is to get in a situation like with Northborough Road where we could have fixed it for forty thousand dollars originally and wound up costing two hundred thousand dollars. So how do we get ahead of those kind of things? And, uh, I don't know there's any easy answer to that, but I'd like to know sort of what's on the radar out there for things like that, that, um, we ought to be thinking about at least. Maybe there's no solution to it, but I'd like to know what's, what's lurking out there, I guess.
Um, I, I'm personally in favor of sort of what I'll call dedicated stabilization funds. We have one for this building, we have one for, um, the building capital maintenance, capital maintenance funds of some sort. And I think, uh, that gives us, I think, predictability in terms of the money we put in. And again, then allows, uh, managers to deploy those funds with a certain amount of oversight. Um, and, you know, to, for example, if, uh, our new, new DPW had wanted a piece of equipment and suddenly found that he could get a really good deal on a used piece of equipment that would serve us well, I think, and that there was then money readily available uh, in, in a stabilization type fund. I'm not crazy, in fact, I'm, I'm opposed to sort of general stabilization funds. But where we create, um, I'll call them capital maintenance funds, we can call them, I guess, find out what the right name is.
So just to be clear, to make sure everybody knows what you're talking about.
Yeah.
You're talking about this stuff. The, the same thing that John Parent has, this hundred thousand dollar warrant article every year. So it's a warrant article that
Yeah.
we, we basically treat like an, you know, impressed petty cash fund. We, we, we put the money back in, getting back up to a hundred, right? And he's, then when things go wrong during the year that were unanticipated, he's got the money to pull it from.
Yeah, even if they're anticipated, you know, he can draw from that pool of money. And, you know, so again, you know, we're, we're empowering managers to manage rather than trying to have this board and town meeting micromanage, uh, departments. So I, I, I would encourage us.
That came directly from you when you were on advisory.
I, I am guilty.
You wanted two hundred, you wanted more than that, but that, that was established because of you.
Yes, I, I, I did author that, that bylaw. And I, I think that's a, that is a class of stabilization fund that I'm quite in favor of and I think we should pursue.
We shouldn't call it a stabilization.
Well, we should.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's not stabilization.
Stabilization fund will still need town meeting vote.
Yeah, understood. Well, yeah.
This is literally a warrant article.
All of these will need town meeting, whatever we call it. We'll call it Fred for now.
It's a warrant article, Al, it's a separate warrant article, so it is.
Yeah.
But like John doesn't need the time to spend the class facilities running, but if we were going to spend stabilization,
Yeah.
you'd still need town.
Okay, so we'll, we'll call this, for example, the, the DPW.
Warrant article.
Capital Equipment Fund. Whatever we want to call it. And, you know, every, every year we put two hundred thousand dollars or whatever, you know, it's not hard to figure out what the long-term number is. And then we say to Bill Comdif, you know, this is yours, you know, let us know what you're going to spend it on, let Brian know at least, and he'll raise a ruckus if he's got a concern. But, you know, we've got talented managers and we ought to need to empower them to manage.
And, and we covered this at an advisory meeting last summer. We did a deep dive into stabilization. One suggestion we had is what we were calling the free cash stabilization, which is basically, and other towns do this, they peg their free cash against their, uh, operating budget. So in the past, like, you know, Brian said it out in, in his memo, this year we're at three point eight nine percent, we were three point four last year, three point two nine, two point five six. So the idea is that you, some towns do between three and five percent. And then you, you know, basically if we had a surplus, we could either sweep that into our general stabilization account or into a specialty stabilization account and release the funds to make sure we get to that target. So it keeps that ebb and flow of our free cash steady as a percentage of our expenses.
It's still stabilization.
Yeah, that's stable.
Stabilization, but it's.
Yeah.
What I like about it is that our stabilization hasn't, hasn't been touched in forever. And it's because we don't have a mechanism or a policy to state what we're going to do. This would basically say if we, this is when we would release it based upon our policy. And town meeting would still have to vote, but, you know, if we could, the policy is we're at three percent. Okay, this year, you know, we're at three point eight nine, okay, sweep that point eight nine into, into the account. And next year we come back at two point five, sweep some of that back into the account to get to three. And you can play this game for years, but you always, uh, keep your free cash steady.
Um, we haven't touched stabilization because there's nothing in it to touch. It's only six hundred thousand dollars in it, so that's why we really get that.
Just, just to put a little, I'm going to age myself here, but, uh, at one point, the stabilization fund was in the neighborhood of two and a half million dollars. And, uh, the advisory committee was quite adamant about that was way too much money to have in stabilization. And so we spent it during a recession.
So this, the recommendations just take five hundred thousand dollars from free cash this year, put it into stabilization with the understanding expectation this money will later be applied towards the Neri school building.
To defer your debt service.
Alright, and it's basically just to discipline yourself, don't spend this money.
Yeah, it kind, yeah, it gets invested in a.
Yeah, okay.
Probably we'd be lucky if we got that much, I think.
So some of the bigger, like theoretical things that we're talking about here are not really presented by this request.
Brian? One of the issues with that is that, um, you do it for three years, you get a million and a half in it. It's not going to do much as far as Neri goes.
I know, I had that, I had that same concern. It's like a drop in the bucket, but I think what, you know, Brian was saying.
Does that? I just, there's, there really is a disagreement among this group already as far as the phil- philosophy of stabilization. So I just think we need a separate discussion, bring Mr. Butler in, um, because, um, there really is two sides to this, um, as far as whether we should do this or not.
So I had two questions. One, does the money get invested or is it just sit there and depreciate slightly?
No, it gets invested.
Invested, yeah.
It doesn't get invested at a high rate.
No.
It's in a bank account.
Like what, two and a half?
Couple of percent or something.
So it's in the true investment program, okay.
Yeah, but it's restrictive. You can't do, uh, with stabilization, you can't.
Can't buy growth stocks.
It's all going to be fixed income.
Stocks and everything, you can't do that with.
It's all fixed income.
That should be part of the discussion too, is if it's for a longer term purpose, do we not put in stabilization, but put it into something that could get us riskier but a higher.
More return, yeah.
So I remember a town meeting a while ago, and I think it was John Butler. There was a shortfall in the town and it went to town meeting. Do you want your tax bill to stay level for a number of years? Or do you want to have a stabilization fund? And I think the town meeting vote was to keep the, the taxes level. And then I think what happened was all of a sudden everybody felt like, whoa, what happened? But the.
The meeting where, um, there was a disagreement between select board and advisory was many years ago. It was three million, they voted to bring it down and it made the tax rate, um, increase negative that year. Um, so that was the vote. So the, um, the Butler-Hamilton camp won out at that town meeting. And that was a long time ago. Well, they did. I mean, that's what happened.
But there's no, there's no discussion here of the tax rates.
I don't bring discussions in Slack.
First and last and only.
And there was a reason six hundred, six hundred is in his white paper. There's a reason it came down to six hundred. So there, there was a math behind that too.
So do we want to set our own liaisons to the major budgets that we're going to have for Saturday? And are there any other? Do we need to tonight set any other liaisons to any budgets? Or are we just kind of wait to see, uh, how things work on that Saturday?
Since advisory's got liaisons to all budgets, I'd say let's do the big five.
Okay.
Let them do their, their job as far as the, the other ones.
So.
Schools are really too regional.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's, we've got, um, big five, big, uh, town, I'm sorry. IT, police, fire, DPW, schools. So, um, do, who would like to do what department?
I want to, and it could be more than one. We can do three, but it can be two, right? So I want to do DPW and IT.
And I've done all of these on advisory, so I'm happy to do anything where there's a hole, so.
Okay.
I have strong feelings.
Um, and Marguerite, do you have any?
I'm most familiar with library, who's going to ask for some money.
Okay, but we're not doing that.
Right, but this is like not these big ones. They're, it's way above my pay grade, at this point, so.
Alright, do you want to do any of them?
You could do it with somebody.
Yeah.
It can be two on these. These are big budgets.
I'd like to do, um, DPW and,
Excuse me, I'd, I'd like to do DPW and I'm, I'm happy to do the schools, although I have grandchildren in the schools. I'm a little conflicted there.
Uh, I think that's not, I also have kids in the schools.
Everybody's got, so don't worry about that.
Yeah.
Assuming you're just not going to pour money in there and double their budget.
We also have, we also have to pay taxes.
I'm not worried about that with Al.
Balance.
Al's not going to do that.
So I, I would like to, um.
You do IT.
Yes.
I, I can, we, I'd like to do IT with you, Kathy.
Well, so does Sam.
Oh, okay.
And we're, this is our goal for the, just so you know, Sam and I are.
Oh, okay.
Signed that goal.
Alright, so then, um.
Can I shadow Al on DPW?
Well, I'm doing DPW with him.
Yeah, with three of us.
That'd be too many people, okay.
Yeah, quorum.
Let me, let me suggest, uh.
If, if it makes sense, I could also do police and fire. I'm, I'm pretty, pretty open. I've looked at all these at one point or another.
So that, that, that one is going to touch on the dispatch issue.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, right.
Makes some sense, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy to work on one or both of those too.
Okay.
Fire, public safety.
So you and Al do police?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So Al, Al and I would do police and fire, but then.
And I'm happy to do schools with Al. Anybody else want to do schools?
Yeah, then you'll do schools?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then DPW is KC.
And you might want to shadow Sam on schools.
Okay.
So right now I have Al on almost everything.
There's no, there's no one thing that.
Okay, Marguerite, why don't you do one, either police or fire with, maybe fire with Andrew? Al's on four out of five.
Yeah, I, I somehow I got, I just overcommitted it.
Let's get into the other one too.
Police or fire, either one would be fine.
Um, you want to do fi- fire? Okay. And, um, I, I remember the first year as an advisory, um, doing this and it's really where you do every single budget. It's very, very interesting. You learn how like, you know, every single department works.
Yep.
This, there's just a whole method, it's pretty quick of how you read those budgets that are in the, it's set up in a OneDrive right now.
Yes.
We actually got the stuff in there.
Yep.
So the basic format is first worksheet is the overall budget. Second one is salary worksheet, formulas plug into it. And oftentimes there's an org, sometimes an org chart, uh, on the next one, right?
Well, it's, you know, it's a big workbook, right? So it's got different tabs and they're labeled as far as what's in there. Capital's in there, um, other, um, income expenses are in there. So there's, you just got to follow the tabs. Okay, I'm talking about rev cap, so you're not talking about rev cap yet.
I'm not talking about rev cap.
Sorry, sorry.
So usually it's the budget and the salary, sometimes a supplemental, other expenses, or training, detail. It's pretty self-explanatory, it's all on the OneDrive. Also on there is the liaisons for advisory. And then, you know, we can add the ones for select board in the same spreadsheet. What we've done in the past, and I suggest we do it again, is that for these budgets, the advisory and the select board liaisons will meet together with the department heads, go line by line in detail, so that we're both, you know, giving them the time and hearing the same thing and asking questions together.
Yep.
And just work along with that.
Do you do it on Zoom?
Maybe you could, but I like person to person. Yeah, no, I think person to department, you really got to sit down and try through the numbers.
So is this right? IT, Sam, Kathy. Police, Al, Andrew. Fire, Andrew, Marguerite. DPW, Kathy, Al. Schools, Al and Sam. And then Marguerite, do you also want to just give us a report on the library budget? I don't know, is there even any, do we have the proposed budget in yet?
The library budget is, is, is pretty under control, but the issue is the $150,000 for the planning and design grant.
Uh, okay, all right, is that a capital or...
The operational budget, he's up just salaries, and actually, he put it up four and a half percent.
Four and a half.
For every single...
Okay, so they're not much done.
I almost added to the consent agenda, but I didn't want to.
It's very...
Yeah, but the other issue is...
Sure.
So Andrew, who's the library liaison for advisory?
Yeah, oh no, sorry, Larry.
So maybe work with Marguerite on that one, since she knows so much about that budget.
Yeah, and Larry is relatively new, so Marguerite would be good.
And the other one is youth and families, I know them pretty well, too.
Yeah, there's two, there's not anything. The only part would be the...
Opioid.
Interface, which, if it's opioid, then it does their budget, not at all.
And we've talked with them about getting interns more aggressively. Being able to find some funding that they can actually go out and pay interns, because it's a really tight market.
Yeah, they've got the ARPA's money, so they've got money for that, at least temporarily.
Is there anybody on facilities?
Yes.
They've got someone on everybody.
Not every budget.
Every real budget.
Every, yeah. They did, okay.
Could I try the facilities one?
Sure, no problem with that?
Yeah.
Um, is there anything else?
So we usually do facilities and then...
Energy?
The energy one, what was the name of that?
Other operations?
Other operations support.
Okay.
That's John Parentz, too, Marguerite.
All right, I can work with that if you don't mind.
That one is just basically electric and...
Just utilities.
So you'd be in charge of bringing our electric rates down.
That's right.
Right.
Well, they better come down, we've got the streetlights going in. It should come down.
They are coming down.
Yep.
Andrew, is there anything else you think we can jointly accomplish tonight, or...
Well, I think let's vote on the consent agenda budgets.
Okay.
And we could hold any that people want to save, but, I mean, I'd love to eat one of those in the committee and see how much of, we're near eating anything crazy, but if anyone wants to hold one, advisory can dig into it in more detail and...
I am okay with these, I mean, you, do you want to hold recreation?
I just think it's wrong, I think this is wrong, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's wrong. And I would like to have you dig in more to, because planning is up more than what I would expect. And they were up last year, too, more than the average. So I either want to hold that one, or just ask you to dig into it.
I'd hold it, I mean, if there's, again, if there's new capabilities, I want to understand what they are, what they cause, and why.
So let's hold that one.
Yeah.
And maybe just hold rec, because I think rec's not right here.
And I can give a quick explanation, Veterans Services stipend up $1,000. What that is referring to is, at one of our, did, I think we voted on it, right? We appointed Brian Sterns as the Veterans Grave Officer? Okay, so he is also the Veterans Agent. And... What this is for is there would be an increase... We did not.
No, I don't recall voting for Brian.
Okay, or maybe I was completely...
I know Steve departed.
Okay, all right, okay.
So prospectively.
Prospectively, that's one of the things that we have considered, okay.
I thought we did it, too.
Yeah. But the idea would be that if you had one person who was both the Veterans Agent and the Veterans Graves Officer, that there would be a modest increase in that person's stipend to do both duties. All right, so that's what that's referring to.
What does flags moved into the budget actually mean?
Memorial Day, the Memorial Day...
So there's no more Memorial Day?
No Memorial Day, yeah.
There goes, what, 500?
So then are we okay with moving, approving this consent agenda of budgets other than 630 rec?
And planning.
And planning.
And planning. Okay, you want to act on it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second, all those in favor? Do you want to take a vote, too?
Motion for advisory committee? Howard, Adam?
All right, can you hear me, Andrew?
Yeah.
Yep. What was the question?
So the motion on the table is to approve that list of consent agenda budgets with the exception of recreation and planning.
Okay, you need a second?
Uh, Howard seconded it, so just...
Oh, okay.
We'll call the vote. Adam?
Aye.
Tim? Marcy?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else you want to?
Yes, stabilization, I think we kind of table that one for now, so we get the numbers.
Yes.
And we're good on liaisons, and I think we have a plan for...
So then Brian and Mark, will you take care of informing all the department heads to get everyone coming in for the Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good, good, good.
All right, motion to adjourn? Uh, Marcy?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys. This would be convenient for time for... Okay.
Recording stopped.
Wait, I've got. I always forget I've got a backpack.
Rick?
Does it work?
Yep.
Okay, so the next item that I'm going to bring up is the discussion of mass housing letter for 250 turnpike. I don't know how far we can get with this tonight, but because we didn't meet two weeks ago. So we have, we haven't had the same discussion about 250 post issuance of a project eligibility letter that we did for 120 where we talked about it, we wrote a brief letter of support to the ZBA. The thing to consider is, does this board want to write any letter to the ZBA about the comprehensive permit application for 250 turnpike? Kathy, you wanna?
I do, but a little bit different flavor than 120, not as full throated. I think we've got to put caveat on, because this one does affect neighbors. 120 doesn't. This one does, so I think we need to at least, you know, make sure that ZBA knows that there's concerns they're going to have to address when they do it. But I still think we write it in support.
This would be a short letter, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I, I think another issue that I'd like to look into and briefly, just encourage the ZBA to look in, is what effect approving that would have on the affordability requirements for 250 and 120. This is something I'm not an expert on, but I, I've been told there's some benefit if the town were to approve both in terms of the income eligibility for the affordable units.
So it sounded like you were bringing it down, maybe?
I, I.
I, I don't either, so.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with Kathy. I, what I would do is actually reference the original letter because it, it laid out a set of issues which definitely does need to be.
Yep.
Addressed, including, you know, the prior agreements and, and the, the height of the building. So I, I think a, a short letter, just referencing that, you know, this project has been, the, the board supported the project and reference that letter.
Okay. Any other comment?
Nope.
So we'll work up a draft to have for the next meeting? All right. F, discussion of potential accessory dwelling unit bylaw. So thank you for your patience. Deb and Doris have been here. So why I put this on the agenda is like a long time ago, and I think this was before this board was constituted. Deb DeMure from the planning board, Doris Cahill from the ZB, and I started kind of, met as an informal working group to talk about our common interest in updating the town's current accessory apartment bylaw, which is, in my view, outdated and for a couple of reasons. One, it has this very weird cap on the number of accessory apartments that can be permitted in town, and it's, one of the things in the inputs into the formula is the number of, the single family homes that existed in Southborough as of 1979? Is that it, Sam?
I think so, somewhere back then, yeah.
It just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Now, as a practical matter, it's not really a big deal because ZBA and assessor's office work together to find out what the current status of that formula is, and we're not close to getting near this cap. However, one of the reasons I got interested in this is the five-year strategic plan for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was commissioned like a year or two ago. They made some specific recommendations about things the town could do to up, improve affordable housing, and one of them was to get rid of that cap. The other feature that's a little bit outdated in my view is that to actually get permission to do this, you need to go to three different boards currently. You need to go to the Board of Health for an okay that this doesn't have a bad impact on subject, that makes sense. And then it needs to be considered by both the ZBA and the planning board. The ZBA gives the special permit, but it has to do so with, based on a recommendation from the planning board. So if you wanted to construct a simple accessory apartment, you'd need to go to three different boards. It seems a little bit overkill. And against this backdrop, there's been, there's just more and more interest in accessory dwelling units as a way of increasing diversity in housing, and by that means, you know, in-betweens between just detached single-family home and apartment, you know, housing that people who are in their twenties or just starting out from college can live in, as well as people on the back end, people looking to downsize, et cetera. So we've just kicked around some ideas that would all be towards the goal of having a proposed warrant article. One of the things that threw a wrench in the system is the governor's current housing bond bill has a proposal that would make it just statewide, every municipality must allow for by right accessory dwelling units up to 900 square feet. So if we created our own local bylaw, it could be mooted in some way by a, a state law, which the most information I have is no one has any idea whether this would actually pass and if it would be considered in like the summer of 2024. So I just wanted to bring it to the board because I would never actually talked about this with this board, and is there interest of this board in working with the planning board on some type of update to this bylaw?
Given if the governor's bill were to pass, they would usurp this, should we wait to see what happens and then look at it?
Well, I think that's one of the things that the planning board also talked about recently, and what was the view of the planning board again of, you wanna, yeah, feel free to come up and.
Me, me, Latrell, Chair of the Planning Board. Yes, we did discuss this. The planning board supports this, but we did want to wait and see what happens this summer, if anything.
Okay.
Secondly, we're trying to get compliance with 3A MBTA communities before town meeting in the spring, which is a heavy lift, so.
Do you think it's too much to do at one town meeting?
I, I think so.
Particularly if the state may change things.
Yeah. May, maybe nothing will happen in the summer and we can look at it again for next year, but.
Yep. Okay, so should we just view the, Al?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm in favor of this, I think, you know, simplifying, anytime we can simplify processes, we ought to. And, you know, I think accessory is one way of increasing the stock of affordable homes in our community.
Yeah, I guess, Andrew, I'm opposed to by right for these. I think that if you have by right here, I think that opens up a substantial amount of variability, unpredictability in terms of neighborhoods. And that's one of the things that I've heard from the MBTA communities' discussions so far, that people are concerned about, you know, what somebody might build next to them by right, basically. And so, I mean, I think that it's great to streamline the process and to make it more convenient for people to get these. I'd be fine with increasing the cap as well, but I think it still ought to be a special permit and work with the planning board as well to make sure that there's some reasonable oversight for how this develops. So that's my current thing, but you say the state may trump all of us.
All right. So should we just continue to stay in touch and that it's not a goal to put on for this annual town meeting? Wait to see what the state does and, I mean, there's some things we could do that probably don't depend that drastically on what the state does. We could keep just working on some proposals.
Could change the cap, for example.
Yep, exactly.
I, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you brought it up, but I agree with Mr. Latrell that MBTA is what we've got to focus on for this town meeting, and that's enough for the moment. And then given that you've got a pending law that may make all this moot, why waste the time if it's going to be irrelevant in a few months?
Okay. I think that covers that topic. Anything else we should talk about? Yeah.
This is Al?
Yep.
Doris Cahill, 29 Over the Drive. So a lot of what Andrew had covered is sort of the birthplace where I'm coming from, and some of the thoughts of the ZBA in general changes, looking, we're looking forward to some change in the current bylaw, but there were just a few other flaws in the bylaw that I felt as a citizen that could use some correction or make it simplified, more, more easily put. And that has to do somewhat with the square footage, because if you did some strain or calculation or some calculation on it, it would put a press on a small home, putting in an accessory versus a larger home. So there's some disparity in, you know, just in the mathematics on that. Again, this, what I would say is an old clause, which actually came up through some applications. There's no one really was tracking it in my mind in recent years as to, we did get a special permit that we in fact were measuring against the 5% of total housing stock since 1979, I think is how that particular law reads, or the zoning code reads. The, the other piece of it was a little bit more forward-thinking, some forward-thinking thoughts in that the other towns, we did some, quite a bit of research on what other municipalities are doing in the area, and we're calling them accessory depart, apartments, and it's more broadly used terminology in the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, kind of taking a focus on that, whether this law passes or not passes. And we don't, I don't believe, someone can correct me, we're addressing these very short-term, there's risk, as, you know, Mr. Stivers is saying, there's some risk, and where can people go wrong? I, I, we'd probably like to see something around making sure we don't turn into a town of Airbnbs under this. But with the caveat, I'd like to do something because to increase our housing stock, we have pressing needs for our elderly, elderly with nurses and disabilities, and you're going to need a kitchen or a separate bathroom. It's just this kitchen aspect that creates the need to put a secondary apartment in. And other parts of our code address, you could put very many unrelated people in the house anyways. So it's just a semantic of being able to put, I don't know, oversimplifying, but simplifying it so people can put a kitchen in, if they wanted to put a kitchen in for their children, second generations, third generations. And it's not easy. It's not easy to do, as it currently stands. But I'm okay with tabling it, although I'd like to continue, continue to work on it because then it'll be in the following, following year, next year, next life.
If nothing happens, you know, in the summer, is this something we could do in a fall town meeting if we had one?
Sure.
No, I, I agree with you. I mean.
So what I've, what I've been trying to get my, my mind around is what will pass at town meeting, and there may be some resistance to ADU versus cleaning, or cleaning or securing or better rewriting the code.
I, I think this, properly presented, I, I think this is something that would go through town meeting pretty well. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, Al. I think that there's opportunity here for people to get exercised about this and start talking about, you know, terrible things that might happen, et cetera, which is always a problem.
Yeah, the tendency.
Less informed.
Right.
Concerned.
When you see the applications come through ZBA, you see some stretch in those applications, but they fall within the zoning code as well.
Yeah, and Doris, you hit on one concern I had as a ZBA member. I never could get a real number in terms of the number of units out there now. Allegedly, there were a lot of units, a lot of accessory apartments out there that were not counted, and so.
The number, the number came in at a press, because that, that is my tendency, at a press. The number came in surprisingly low, I agree with you, Sam.
Yeah.
And that brings up safety.
Yep.
Safety and fire, so.
Exactly.
When I think of, when legislation or law isn't quite right or serves the community easily, they're going to possibly do it anyways, and then we end up with safety issues.
And, and again, I think if we're doing it, we ought to build the infrastructure to support it in a safe way and make sure that, not putting people's lives at risk halfway, like, you know, an apartment with no fire exit kind of thing, for example.
Right, so that, you know, when you, when we're doing some comparisons in the, in the town codes, they talk about things like that, owner occupied, please, let's not make it a three-family. Other safety concerns, proper egress, you know, into, into the unit. Multiple way you can get out for fire, not fully enclosed in the basement.
Yep.
With no way out.
I, I, I assume all of this is dealt with in the building codes?
Of course, of course it is if they're on the books.
Yeah, if it's enforced.
If it's enforced and on the books, but if it were possibly to get an effect, and I think you'll always have someone who's not going to be on the books.
Yep.
But nothing we're talking about is going to change that. Is it not true that most accessory dwellings count as affordable as far as the SHI inventory?
Kathy had that all of her notes, it's, don't?
They do.
Most don't, I think.
Do.
Okay, Doris says yes, you say don't. I've heard yes, they do.
I don't know.
Okay, you don't know, you say yes, you say no.
Well, we've been going with, yes, why don't we triple check that?
You gotta go through procedure to get that.
So I believe, so some, some homes may indeed just wish to rent it to a family member to help support. Now, that's not maybe a, a third party, but that could just be to help support that household through the economic times or support the elderly or disabled people and family. But I believe it might, or it does. I've read that it does. That doesn't mean it is. I don't have to tie anybody else's time up tonight. It's late for me, I get up at five.
You're doing very well.
Okay, great. Okay, that's it. I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marguerite, do you want to, then we'll go back to B, the Town Common Old Burial Ground?
Yes, this is so Kevin can finally go home after a very long day. Bill Kundif and Kevin Miller and I were looking at the rehabilitation and repair list for the old burial ground, the Town Common and the Rural Cemetery. And Kevin, you probably, you sent a beautiful, long email that had a number of things, and I think I've got them all in. But I'm just going to say briefly what we came up with. I hadn't talked to Bill, but I did talk to a number of other people, which were possibilities. The old burial ground, oh, first of all, town flags. The other one is so faded you can't see it, and this one, Vanessa said, when there's a parade, they have to take that flag out of here, use it in the parade, and then bring it back. I think since our town flag was designed in 1979 by a town resident, we need a few more that are in presentable condition.
So this is something for the Rural Cemetery, right?
I don't know. It's just sort of general historical things for the tricentennial. We need some, some new flags. This one is good. The other one in the Rural Cemetery is, you can't, it's pink, you can't even read it. All right. In the old burial ground, what I have down, the trees, the trees need pruning and they need maintaining. Does anyone fertilize them? Is anyone feeding the trees in the old cemetery, the burial ground?
Don't, I don't know.
Not that I know of. And some of them may need to be removed. The headstones need to be repaired and inventoried. The stone walls need a little help, they've been falling down from people jumping on them. And historical markers need to be installed there. The Town Common, one of the big issues is the granite and cast iron fence, which looks like it's been falling apart for a while. The howitzer needs to be repaired because it's losing paint. It's actually German, but okay, however it got there, it has a story. And some of the trees are down there, but some people had said that there were shade trees there in the, in, within memory, and that they've all been cut down, but it would be nice to have some shade trees on the common. The street signs, St. Mark's Street does not end here, it ends up there. That's actually the end of Common Street, so that sign needs to be exchanged. And I think there is an old Common Street sign from the 1940s or 50s, which I think the DPW has. There are granite markers, which Kevin pointed out. The boundary stone near 34 Main was removed for paving. The James Burke sign, who was a war veteran, who was like a 17-year-old who died in the First World War, was removed for paving, and both of those are somewhere, but nobody knows quite where they need to be replaced. And in the Rural Cemetery, the granite crypts doors are rusting out, they are falling apart. They need to be repaired. There's a stone wall that is bulging on the southwest side of the newer part of the old cemetery that needs to be looked at. Mark said, when I asked him tonight, that it was, it had been inspected, it was okay. And the street signs within the Rural Cemetery are deteriorated and, and they're very depressing and falling apart. The other suggestion for the Rural Cemetery was the columbarium where the cremated remains are kept, are looking over a bramble patch, a bittersweet patch, it's choking everything up. And it, it was, it was suggested to me that if that area could be, if the brush could be cleared, if the invasives could be cleared, and some kind of a garden. be cleared, if the invasives could be cleared, and some kind of a garden, benches, something put there, it might partly solve the rural cemetery plot, rural cemetery's plot crush, where there aren't enough places, where people might find it a little more attractive to be interred there if there were benches and a side of the reservoir.
My quick reaction...
Those are the things.
I think it would be helpful if, from that, you know, list, if, working with Bill, if we can sort out things that are just kind of punch list items, where, you know, they're just on a list of things, at some point, someone from DPW goes and clears this brush and does that, or from things that are really, are capital expenditures, where, like the classic, the best example is the iron railing around the town common that's like uneven and not safe, so, you know, there would be a cost associated to that, and Bill can help put together a plan of, either you bundle a couple of related items, and, yeah, sorting out, like hitting a couple bigger items, where Bill can help either price it out directly or think of a way to bid it out, and maybe combine a couple items where you can get some savings from doing them together.
Andrew, there's actually money in the trust funds for cemetery upkeep, and so, and I can't speak for the entire committee, but I think there is a general interest and support for finding ways, both for the rural cemetery and the old burial ground, to pay for some of that maintenance work. So if Bill could put together a proposal, I think that would be a useful conversation with the commissioners of trust funds.
But I agree that you've got the right idea as far as segregating between things that, I mean, I don't think they can find the Burke sign, Kevin, because I keep asking about it too, because that's my yoga friend, I told you, is a Burke, and she keeps going, where's that sign? So I'm hoping they can find these things if they look again, but switching the signs, getting those right, getting those back, one of them's broken, one of them's not, so that part, we should be able to do easily, right? Then, I think you're right, everything else, and then we can say, you know, what could be, what do you think qualifies for the trust fund rules? Have you got the money sorted out now, you know what you've got there?
Yep.
So, yeah, I think this is a good plan.
Several cemetery funds, yeah.
Okay, good. Kevin, do you have anything you would add in terms of priorities?
Yes.
Because I really got a lot to do. Kevin Miller, 18 Lawrence Squama, Chair of Historical Commission. I agree with you, Andrew, that dividing these things up into some of the things DPW can do fairly quickly, although unfortunately, a lot of those assets that you would think DPW could replace, for instance, the Common Street signs, there was the one that's been found apparently, and one that was broken, those pieces have not been located yet. In both cases, if those are going to be reset, they need to be restored first, treated for rust, repainted, rehabilitated, I'm not sure DPW has that capacity, so there's going to be, the Burke sign will have to be...
Redone.
Reordered, remade, some of those other things, like, you know, I think Bonnie Faniff had identified that the howitzer needs some TLC, that's going to be probably beyond DPW's scope, so I think a lot of this will actually involve us, but we can, for instance, bundle some of this stuff, for instance, so let's take the granite and iron rail fencing around the common, that's iron work. We also know, because when you and I walked to the old burial ground, those granite, the family plots, where they would have granite posts with iron rails, and they're either gone or broken or deteriorated, so that could be sort of bundled together, but there's going to be sort of restoration work prior to DPW coming in, and in some cases, buttoning up, so I do, would say, one of the things I mentioned to Marguerite and Bill in my message was that, for instance, I gave the example that Salem has a very similar kind of fencing around their common, and they use CPA funds to tackle that project very successfully, so, and I'm already looking at some vendors that I think would be quite likely, there's no shortage, fortunately, so some of these, and let's see, pruning in the old burial ground, my understanding is that DPW hasn't pruned the trees for many years, ironically because they're afraid of damage, of branches coming down, you know, it's because, and I think in the case of the pruning, and it may likely be the case in the rural cemetery as well, but certainly in the old burial ground, pruning by a professional arborist that has the capacity, for instance, to bring down a large branch without it hitting what's underneath, you know, because the assets under there, the stones are very much at risk, so I think it's going to be a very specialty kind of a version of operation, if you will, where you have to go rather delicately, because some of the assets need to be restored, some still need to be located. For instance, the boundary stone that I mentioned, Bill says they've got it, they can't find the Burke sign, they've got one Common Street sign, so it's going to be, you know, a matter of, I think, finding vendors and restoration.
Do you think you can sort out the items in the way that I'm suggesting?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I think the tree pruning, I mean, any professional tree company can actually bring down those branches a piece at a time, so they basically put a crane up there and tie a rope on it and move it out, so I think that is challenging, but all those guys actually have the capability to do those kind of things.
The thing is getting the crane in on top of the graves, I think.
Well, no, but you can reach the crane from the street, they've got those cranes that have a huge reach, so...
And, you know, and this is going to also involve, as Sam has already brought up, for instance, with the cemetery trust funds and all that, because, you know, you're aware of that retaining wall in the southwest quadrant, I mean, that's, you know, a major...
Needs repair.
Major play, and, you know, then you can get into more longer term, I think we can also, with Marguerite and Bill, we can sort of prioritize timing, because a longer term goal is, for instance, this restoration of headstones over, you know, over here, but that's not as urgent, obviously, as getting the fence, getting the signage properly done, so we can have a kind of, maybe also a phased plan on some of this stuff, and then figure out where we're going to get the money.
Good.
Sorry, thanks, and I agree, the town flag is absolutely beautiful, and the version, as you've seen it, and then the rural cemetery is pink.
You know what we're referring to?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you, in the rural cemetery, you go across from the public safety building, there's kind of elevated place where there's a US flag, POW MIA flag, and the town flag, and if you, if you walk closely through it, it looks, it's in very bad condition, it looks like it's had, like, faded by sun over decades, so, a simple thing, it's just...
It's that raised area right, right on Court of Commerce Road, and you come up and there's a little plaque to Leo Burton Ozzy, who designed the flag, and then it's US flag, the town flag, and it's actually state flag, that's also very badly faded out, so I said, let's order several of those town flags, so when they wear out, we can actually respectfully replace...
Because it's a really good flag.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's quite nice.
Well, I'm very interested that they keep going, I mean, I'd love to see all the stuff done, it's going to take a while to do it right, we've got to find the money.
We won't get it all done all at once, it's not, from the description, it's not one big project that would do everything, but just...
And so, for instance, a longer term aspect of this, as Marguerite mentioned, is maybe plantings on the common, because they've got those ornamental, you know, very, I think they're dwarf crab apple, they don't do much in terms of shade, and I had a conversation, I think, with Don Morris at one point, of course, grew up right across the street here, and he said, you know, he recalls a time when this was all beautifully shaded, and you, you know, he was talking about childhood memories of walking from here to Marrow's without ever being in the sun, you know, in the summer, that you could do that, and to have that kind of expansive canopy, you know, would be, I think, a goal, you know, would only take, for instance, in the common, maybe planting one or two sort of trees that would become heritage trees, you know, very large, spreading, whether they're oaks or in a hybrid American elm, or chestnut, or something that, you know, would provide shade rather than, you know, those, those trees are not thriving anyway, so, anyway.
Good, thank you.
Kevin, shall we, shall we all meet during our Christmas vacations to sort this out?
That's a good time for me, Marguerite, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last item on our regular agenda is appointing a select board member to the Metro West Regional Collaborative. I think the next question's going to be, what is the Metro West Regional Collaborative?
What is it?
My understanding is, it has some relation, it's like a subgroup of the MAPC, or it's affiliated with that?
Yep, it's a subgroup, yeah.
And there's a planning board representative to it? Is there another boards representative to it? So they're looking for a select board, it's a group of Metro West towns that get together and collaborate on, yeah, planning issues of common concern to all the communities.
Who's looking for select board? They are?
The Metro West Regional Collaborative. This is an email which someone sent me, and then I, I don't remember who sent it to me. Maybe Mimi did it.
It's the Metro West region of MAPC, and, you know, there's a central mass region and a western mass region, and...
10 towns or something, or whatever, small number.
Yeah, I think it's 11, we just added Sherbin, and we get together once a month via Zoom, and we discuss 3A and what, you know, other towns are doing, and so things that are, you know, happening in other towns, and how towns are, within the region are handling it, and what's going on with the state with legislation, and...
Is there a regular time each month when they meet, or?
Eight to 9:30 via Zoom last Thursday.
In the morning.
Yeah.
Mimi, I actually looked at their website, and it looked to me like they basically are doing very little, I mean, the last minutes I saw were from 2021 or something there, and the projects, they didn't have anything on there, and there were a bunch of vacancies on the list that I saw on the website, so I was confused, I mean, I think it's a great concept, but it sure didn't look like...
Maybe the website isn't up to date, but we meet every, except for in the summer, we take off, we meet...
Okay, so they actually are meeting regularly and doing useful things?
Yeah, and we just, there's someone from MAPC that's kind of the admin for the group, and she just got promoted, and we got new ones, so there was a little bit of a transition, but we're back up. So there's, there's one planning board member and one select board member appointed from each town.
And it looked like, though, there weren't many filled seats for a number of the towns, on the website at least, so you think that everybody is actually participating now, as far as you can tell.
As far as I can tell.
What's the meeting date again, Thursdays?
Thursdays.
Eight AM to 9:30.
The last Thursday of the month, or?
Yes, I think so.
I guess I have some interest if anybody else doesn't, I've got...
Sold.
Another conflict for the, for the second, for the second and third Thursdays, but if it's the fourth Thursday in a month, I could do that. Does anybody else, anybody else eager to do it?
No, I think you'd be a great, great candidate, Sam.
And...
I can't do it at eight or nine, eight to 9:30 in the morning.
I didn't mention that there's, there's a stipend of $100,000 a meeting.
I still can't do it from eight to 9:30 in the morning.
I haven't been getting mine.
Well...
Okay, so there, I second. All right, all those in favor?
I'll vote for myself.
Thank you, Sam, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So before we go into executive session, is there any other public comment?
Okay.
What happened to our public commenter previous?
He left, Andrew talked to him.
Yep.
We have a, we have a hand up.
Yep, can you bring her over?
Hi, can you please confirm you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, it's Kristen Lavalt, 12 Southwood Drive, just two questions, one, and if I missed this in the various updates, I apologize, but I was curious what the latest status was of the REC Center slash 21 Highland discussions, including the St. Matthew's interest, as well as the committee that we had been discussing over the last several months. Second to that, I just was curious, in the executive session that you're both about, with that you're about to go into, there's multiple items listed, but the fourth and final is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, as the chair has determined that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's position, exemption six, which I can appreciate, but can you confirm that that, if that discussion is about 21 Highland? Again, I don't think it would violate the terms of executive session to at least inform us what property it is that's being discussed, thank you.
Yeah, I think it might, Andrew, I mean, depending on, you know, what's, what's there.
Okay.
At least I wouldn't feel comfortable advertising to the world.
That you're considering the exchange or sale of a property within the town? I can understand your position, but do we not...
A specific property, and again, when we get a specific deal, then I think we involve, you know, the appropriate stakeholders and have a discussion about it, but that, to me, jeopardizes your bargaining position, in fact, if it's not 21 Highland, then that opens the door for someplace else, if it is, I think that just, again, sort of, to me, diminishes my bargaining potential as I talk about this, so that's my personal view.
So, Sam, I can appreciate that, then is it, so, actually, before I ask that question, backing up, could we get a status on those other items that I asked about?
But that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, there really is, there's nothing further to report on that right now.
Okay, so that's disappointing, it's not on the agenda, and we're requesting that we get an update on the next one, because it has been a pretty hot topic, week over week, and then it kind of dropped off, and then to see this executive session item come up, you can see how minds might think, huh, what's going on here? I guess my last question is that regardless of what happens in executive session, if you come up with some sort of bargaining position, whatever it is, is that something that eventually does come to the town?
You mean the town meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, if we have a deal, town meeting has to vote on property, change of hands.
Great.
Okay.
So I'll just close in saying I'd like to formally ask that there's an agenda item addressing, again, the discussions with 21 Highland, the committee, what the latest is with the St. Matthew's proposal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? That's it, so I think we're gonna ask everyone who's not here for the executive session to leave, or, wait, 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 we can take a vote in an open session to go into executive session, right?
Yes, you need to, yes.
Okay, I move that the board enter into executive session per Mass General Law 30A Section 21, and not returning to open session for the following four purposes. One, to review and approve executive session minutes from October 26, 2023, exemption seven. Two, to discuss a step three grievance from the police union, exemption three. Three, to discuss a step three grievance from the fire department, exemption three. And four, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, as the chair has determined, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's position, exemption six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Do you have to do roll call to enter?
On a vote to go into executive session?
Yeah, actually, don't, I mean, this is, you roll call it when you're in executive session.
Okay. We don't need to take a roll call vote on the open session vote to go into executive session. Okay, so then we have voted to go into executive session.
All in favor, all right.